Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, November 26, 2018 Select Board Meeting in the upper floor Select Board Meeting Room of the Groton Town Hall. I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday and is ready to get back to the fun of a board Select Board meeting. Today, we will review the agenda for the public and then have announcements, if any, followed by a public comment period. On the Town Manager Report today, we'll review the Select Board's agenda schedule, consider approving the Town Manager's request to expend funds to obtain a concept plan for housing development on the Groton Country Club property, and discuss the Select Board meeting schedule for the remainder of 2018. Today is planned a workshop to establish the calendar year 2019 goals of Select Board, after which there will be no public comment. I may shift that to the end, just so that we can get through the items that may have comment, and then we don't have to worry about shifting back and forth and confusing the public. Under other business, approve the creation of a gift fund for the old Burying Ground Committee, and consider setting a requested completion date for the Fire Department Task Force Study Committee. That will actually not be held tonight, because the individual request of that is not here, and I wish to defer in his favor. And then we have our ongoing issues list. If I could get my system to work. Followed by liaison reports and regular scheduled meeting minutes to approve of October 22, 2018, October 29, 2018, and November 5, 2018. And with that, are there any announcements?
Chairman, I have one.
Mr. Hadad.
The Groton Women's Club will be holding their 13th Annual Green Sale on Saturday, December 1, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., with a snow date of Sunday, December 2. It would be held at Williams Barn, 160 Chicken P Row in Groton. They will have wreaths, boxwood trees, centipedes, swags, kissing balls, quilt raffles, ornaments, and holiday cookies. Proceeds from the sale go towards scholarships for students at the Groton Duncival Regional High School, Neshobie Valley Technical High School, and the Francis W. Parker Charter School, plus other women's charitable organizations. For further information or to pre-order, you can call Nancy at (978) 448-3181, or Tracy at (978) 448-2245.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? All right, moving on, public comment period. Anybody from the public wish to make a statement? All right, moving quickly. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, there are a couple of things that are not listed on my weekly report, but I sent an email out to the Select Board this afternoon, having to do with issues that I would ordinarily have in my Town Manager's Report, but I didn't have enough time to get it done this week. First, Peter Cunningham raised the issue that when the town obtained the Country Club, the deed contained a restriction that prohibits anything being constructed on the property other than golf. I reviewed the deed. I sent the board all a copy of the deed. There is nothing in that deed that has any such restriction. So should the board decide to move forward with item number two on the agenda tonight, there's nothing that prohibit you from doing that. Secondly, with regard to the issue raised about placing additional information on the local ballot explaining what a yes vote or no vote means, I was wrong last week, and I apologize to the board with my answer to Becky's question. Under state law, communities cannot, as I had said, place this information on the ballot unless they adopt Mass General Law, Chapter 53, Section 18B, which in fact, the town did in 2015. That is the law that'll authorize the town to send out ballot information packets and allows a further explanation on the ballot itself. So I regret providing with the wrong information, but I'm glad Becky asked the question, and I'm glad we did the follow-up. If we decide to move forward with the highway garage and the library roof in the spring, and we put that on the ballot, and the board decides to move forward with a debt exclusion, I'd say we do the yes, what a yes vote does, and a no vote doesn't really get that explanation out on the ballot as well as the information packet that we sent out. So again, I apologize for the erroneous information, but I'm glad we got it rectified.
Does any board member have any questions or comments regarding either of those items? Hopefully, we'll cover one of those under number two, but I do have a plan to put or just can further our discussion regarding a ballot focus committee, if you will, for lack of a better term, on a future agenda.
Well, I would just comment that I am glad to know what we are allowed to do. It was unfortunate that we did not. I think it would've addressed a lot of the confusion if we had been, if we had put our what a yes vote means and what a no vote means, which we had written, were within the packet. It's unfortunate, and I'm glad to know how we can do it in the future.
Mr. Chairman, at your last meeting, I presented the board with a request to expend $4,500 from either reserve fund transfer or the Town Hall budget, with the intention of reimbursing that account at the 2019 Spring Town Meeting to hire an engineer to develop a concept plan for potential housing development on Groton Country Club property. Since the Finance Committee does not have any meetings scheduled in the next couple of weeks, if the board does vote to authorize that expenditure, I would request that you authorize the expenditure from the Town Hall budget. I have no new information to provide the board since our discussion last week, so the question simply to the board tonight is, will you authorize me to expend $4,500 to develop a concept plan for housing development on Groton Country Club property? And once we get that back, the next step would be, as John Geiger suggested last week, for the board to consider appointing a committee to oversee and work with the Town Manager and the Affordable Housing Trust and others on this potential project.
Any board members? Yes, Becky.
I'm just curious, your use of the word "concept plan"
Yep.
Sounds a little bit more detailed than I thought.
Well, when I say "concept," I should've said "conceptual." I apologize for my word choice.
Right, so it's basically just to do the research to determine what the land could conceivably support.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, I apologize for the use of the word "concept," I meant "conceptual."
And I'm happy to make that motion. I had, I did have another question. Should I ask my question first?
Yeah, yeah, you can do whatever order you want to.
Okay. My question is, the, your statement about needing to reimburse that budget, what is the Town Hall budget?
That pays the postage for bills that get mailed out by the Treasure Collector's Office. It pays for the postage for the mailer that we send out for warrants for Town Meeting. It pays for ballot, ballot information packets and the printing of the warrant.
Leases on some of the machines?
Leases on some of the machines, the copying machines here at the Town Hall. I know that we've been very tight with that budget, and we've already had to do one additional ballot information packet this fiscal year. If the board votes to ask for debt exclusion overrides in the spring for the highway garage and the library roof, if you decide to do that, that's an additional packet, so I'll need that 4,500. I have a feeling, Becky, I'll need that $4,500 back.
And that's the only account that is sort of discretionary
Yes.
For your use during the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's really not discretionary, it has direct uses, but it, I do have discretion over it, yes.
You have access to it.
I have access to some of that money, yes.
Okay. Well, I move that we authorize the Town Manager to spend $4,500 from his, from the Town Hall budget to hire an engineer to develop a conceptual plan for potential housing development on the Groton Country Club property.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
All right, moved and seconded. Beat me to it. All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a discussion. Allison, you've got your hand raised, please.
I do, so I have a couple of questions. Last week, we had talked about the need to make sure that kind of other alternatives and uses are given at least some consideration. So I'm at this point personally a little bit uncomfortable moving forward with one choice to a conceptual level, while we haven't seen or talked about what anything else would be. And then the other question I have is that, to me, it seems to make more sense to create that committee and convene them, and then let them have some say as to whether this is the first reasonable step or not. So I'd like to hear, I guess, what others think about kind of the order of operations here.
Does anybody have a response to that? John, Becky?
I would like to see the committee put in place as soon as possible. We need to get a handle as quickly as we can on what is and isn't feasible. And I can support expending this $4,500 to get that information, but I really wouldn't want to go beyond that.
That's all I'm asking for.
Without, I wouldn't want to see it go beyond there without a committee in place and some more formality into, into all the decision processes and so forth.
Just, John, Barry, may I ask you on a question?
Yeah, please.
Do you want a committee charge for this committee prior to us advertising it? Because I think we should probably have an idea of what the committee is to do. So if you could work with me or somebody on this board work with me this week to draft a charge for that committee, I can have it on next Monday's Agenda for Board Review and Consideration.
Well, I think the board has to decide whether this committee, the scope of this committee, you know, is it gonna, if we decide to go with it, is it gonna go all the way through to the end, or is this just a front piece, and then we'll have another committee that would get involved?
I think you'd probably want the same committee, but I always find it, from experience with the board, that giving you something to beat up and edit makes it more productive than trying to draft it here at the board level.
Yeah, a template is usually a wise idea, then we can.
I mean, I think it would look an awful lot like the charge of the committee to the highway garage, but having a little more upfront, because the highway garage before the committee was put in had had a bunch of upfront work done.
The only upfront would be the conceptual idea of housing on that site? Is that what you're saying?
Right, well, and I would think they would have a need to, to make a recommendation, whether we go forward or we don't go forward, as, as it should be part of the charge, and that's a deliverable, that recommendation, so.
I'd be happy to work with you on coming up with that charge. Housing has been an interest of mine, and I would be interested in actually being part of whatever committee we put together. But I actually have a question for Allison. So we've owned the Country Club 20 years approximately, I think is what you said.
No, '89 you bought the Country Club. Almost 30 years.
Thirty years.
Almost 30 years.
And over the years, I have heard discussion about potential housing. I know it was considered when we were looking for space for high school, but I've never heard any discussion or suggestions about other uses, so I'm wondering what other uses you have, you think might happen there.
I guess for me, it's not necessarily that I have specific other uses in mind. I think that, you know, having just heard the presentation from Jack and Kevin, it's pretty clear that there's not a tremendous amount of commercial industrial space available. A parcel such as that that is right along 119 could, might or might not be viable for that use in part. You know, personally, I'm still, I'm happy to see the Country Club making tremendous progress toward being self-sustainable or self-sustaining. I'm not convinced that keeping the Country Club or keeping the Country Club as a town-owned entity is in the best interest of our community. So I would like to see, you know, a lot of those questions that were kind of encompassed in prior reports, just reviewed again, you know, in the context of 2018, before we move forward. I'm uncomfortable, to me, it feels like kind of putting the cart before the horse to do a conceptual housing review without having any discussion or contemplation of other potential uses that might or might not make sense ultimately.
So the land that you were thinking of, Mark, is not the land right along 119 or even visible from 119 really?
No, it'd be, it'd be the access off of Whitman Road up where the current pavilion and tennis courts, and there's a parking lot across the street. That would be the, the land that I would look, that I, that the board should look at for consideration of the, of this potential housing development.
Yeah, there are some wetlands out there.
Absolutely.
Right in, you know, right near that area, and, and so, I, again, I sort of, I agree with Mark. The concept word doesn't work for me, because I think what we're looking at is trying to understand, is it even feasible?
Right.
Just call it a feasibility plan instead of a conception.
Whatever, but if it isn't feasible, then we stop without, without expending more money or more time on that particular possibility.
I guess my concern is that if it is found to be feasible, that we continue to move forward with only that one alternative and find ourselves somewhere down the line wondering why we never thought about commercial Country Club sale, Country Club reuse, you know.
I think you can broaden the charge of the committee to encompass that, and I certainly would support that if we decide that. So my, my question is to the board to consider, is this money loss? If we, if we spend this money now, does it not have a purpose, no matter what direction it goes? To me, it seemed like this money was gonna, it should be expended regardless, because we're gonna have to understand certain realities of what can and can't be done at the, at the Country Club. I, the only question I have, is there any, is there any power or benefit in adding two or three feasibility ideas into such a thing, or is it gonna, you know, so we get, instead of spending $4,500 per, we spend $8,000 for two and $11,000 for three ideas? You know, I don't know if there's any cost savings there. I'm not sure that it, that it, that we, you know, I'm not sure that we, we shouldn't be worried about that more than that. This is gonna get us a yes, no on a certain conceptual, or a certain feasibility idea. We're gonna form the committee anyway. If this idea's off the table, they'll know that, and they can go and look at other things. If this idea's on the table, then it could be harder to know it's part of the world, the possibilities, and move forward with it, adding that to a mix of ideas. Yeah, John?
So maybe this first commission, or committee, or whatever we want to call it, that we put in place winds up being responsible for looking at the big picture, which this is a possibility. And if it's decided to go forward with this, then, just like the highway garage, it winds up having a, a committee such as that on this particular structure, but you'd still have a second committee that's looking at the possibilities for the, for all, all the space, but.
I think one committee can do both.
I think it would be very hard, because if they get bogged down in one, one project, they aren't looking at the, all the other possibilities or investigating them and so forth. I mean, there's several ways to go with it, but, you know, I agree with Allison, we really, we do have to put effort into seeing what else we could do. Let's suppose this works, but what can we do there with the rest of the land to perhaps still keep golf in the game, but yet find some other revenue-producing opportunities?
Following Barry's point, if I may, Barry, you had said that, you know, $8,000 for another concept, $11,000 for another concept. Right now, you have one proposed feasibility use out there for the housing, and you have a quota of $4,500. Before we move forward with other expenditures, I think the committee should get up and running and decide what those other areas are, and then come back to this board seeking funding to expand the look. So you'll do the, first you do the golf question, you'll get, you'll get a layout, and you'll understand what's there for available space if you want to keep golf, and then you'll know if the thing is an industrial park, as Allison says, then you have a whole different idea that you're gonna spend, because now you're talking about 60 acres, not just, was it 15 acres that we're, that we're looking at? So I think, I think it could be done stepwise, get one thing done, and then move forward.
Yeah, Becky, and we'll go to the audience afterward.
I just want to say, I am very much in favor of exploring the use of a portion of land that is not being used really for anything else right now, for housing on the Country Club property. But I think that if there's, if someone is thinking that we should look at the entire Country Club property and whether we're making the best use of it, that is a completely different question, and one that I am not even, I wouldn't even see why we needed to do that. We have a self-supporting Country Club right now, and, and it has some land that isn't being used and could conceivably be used for housing. I think we should proceed with the first step of finding out whether it could be used for housing. And if the answer is no, it can't, then maybe we look at, well, what could it be used for? Is there something else available? But expanding this to say, what do we do with the entire Country Club property, is a very, very different question that I personally am, would have to be convinced has, has merit for us to spend time on.
Allison?
I guess I was just wondering, Mark, following what you just said, how does it, what I heard you say was that it makes sense to move forward and look at this concept now than to amass the committee and then to look at other alternatives? And I'm wondering what makes this meritorious of review at this point as opposed to kind of holding it until?
Three years ago, I came to this board role, I came to the Select Board, and I said, give me, or four years ago, give me three years to get the Country Club at a profitable level, or, or not losing money. The board gave me that three years, they allowed me to hire a consultant that came in from Settlers Crossing. They came in, they did an intensive study for us, I think I shared a copy with all members of this board. We implemented that plan by bringing on a, one general manager slash head professional that has done a phenomenal job turning the club around. And so we're at a point right now where that club is almost at break-even point. I mean, we're, we're right there, and I'm very proud of the effort of Shawn Campbell and, and what he's done for us over the last four years that he's been our head professional, general manager. Personally, I'd like to see that Country Club continue on, because we, we had a goal, I think we reached that goal. I'd like to continue that goal. But there is undeveloped land that has potential to bring in some additional revenues to the town, and to me, that should be the initial focus before we throw away the hard work of the last three years, making that Country Club profitable. I'll be meeting, I'm gonna invite all of you to Wednesday morning at 12 o'clock, when Shawn comes in to present his budget. We'll be looking at the revenues and the potential revenues and what he's doing to, to continue down that path. I encourage you all to come to that meeting to hear it. It's a private, not a public, meeting for the public, as my meeting with the, with the staff. I invite Select Board members and FinCon members if they want to attend. It's a working session for the Town Manager. But I, Allison, to answer your question, I don't want to see the Country Club go away, because we've worked hard over the last four years to get it to a point where it is right now, and this is a potential to even make it better, and the housing is a potential following along with Becky says.
Understood, and I feel like if the intent here, I mean, my understanding is, is not correct, but if the intent were to look at that undeveloped or underutilized land to see what's viable, that, I could support that. But since the intent is to look at the currently undeveloped land for housing only, I feel like we're kind of pushing all kinds of things out of the way to get to what we have already predetermined is the best path forward.
Yeah. I think that we're conflating two scopes here, and, and I'm reluctant to, as being one of the members that was on the FinCon and then on the board, I'm sorry, Judy, we'll get to you in just a moment, I apologize, and said, yeah, show us you can do this, and then someone showed us they could do it, and then being on the board just then say, oh, that was awesome, thank you for doing that, now we're gonna talk about not doing anything like this, right? That doesn't seem very genuine and very trustworthy, in my opinion, so, but if we are isolating the scope of the proposed committee to what can be done with these particular parcels, I think that's a viable option, and I, I think that this work would go right into it as whether it proceeds now or proceeds later. I don't know that it, I don't know that the, I don't know that the timing is irrelevant, you know, I, I, I don't know if there's issues with, with weather that get in the way, if you don't do this now, you have to wait. I don't know that it's worth to form a committee if they don't know this is on the table, because this is the one item that's been proposed to spark this. If it's not on the table, then they know they have to look for other alternatives and suss those out. If it is on the table, that's one item, and then they can work on the other two or three or four.
So my understanding from the group, and I wasn't part of it, was that the intent was to implement some changes, invest, you know, in fairly controlled manner, see if the Country Club could be brought to self-sustaining, which it is or very nearly is, and then that we would know whether that was viable. It sounds like, maybe I'm missing a piece in that the intent of the, the group or the outcome was to see whether it could be self-sufficient, and then if it can be, we've committed to keeping it. That's, I guess, the piece that I missed, maybe.
Okay, well, I would never want to be part of an organization that said, work really hard and make this thing self-sufficient, because that's what we want. If I had an Art also said, and by the way, if you do, there's no, there's no, there's no chance, there's no point, because we're probably gonna take it away and figure out what to do with it on our own anyway. I don't, I don't know, and boards change and things change. I just, I wouldn't feel comfortable being an employee in that situation and then put my trust and faith in a board again when I'm asked to do something. So I, I understand what you're saying 100%, and you weren't part of that board, and I completely understand that, and boards change, and these are the realities of politics. I just have to tell you where I sit, and that I am not willing to increase the scope, having been part of that committee, so my vote will therefore be portrayed in advance. I can let Judy weigh in, because we've been ignoring her for quite a while.
I just wanted to say that maybe if you took out of the motion the word "housing," the words "housing," just that single word, and say, develop a concept plan for potential development on Country Club property, that maybe that would help Allison with her views on the motion.
Can we have Mark's response to that? Because I think that was actually asked, or sort of touched on at our last discussion.
I, I think, Judy, that's a fair point, but when I contacted the engineer, I specifically asked for what I can do there relative to housing, and that's why Becky made the motion that she made. But I understand your point.
Let's go to Art, and I'll come to, to John, and then I'll let him forward on this item.
I have to agree with Mark, I want to see the Country Club, remain the Country Club. There's been a lot of thought put into this by myself and other people, going back to 1989, in fact. Peter Mayette did a lot of work back then. One of the reasons I like the concept of 55-plus active retirement community is, is no children to speak of that we have to worry about educating, number one. Number two, a housing development like this is symbiotic and synergistic with the Country Club. If you look up the greens up in North Reading, you look at Quail Ridge over in Acton, the people that live in those units are very active within the Country Club, the pool, the golf course itself. The other thing you have to remember is that land's IRA. If you start talking commercial development, you've got a whole new problem facing you in that you'd have to rezonate. And rezoning in this town is almost a dirty word. And so I really do think this is probably the best alternative. I thought about it a lot. I don't know if Peter Mayette won't speak to the work that he did back in '89. I think it was on my phone, it was on Peter. I don't recall the year.
I'll recommend, Peter, thank you.
Thank you. There was a group of people that had looked at it prior to the town buying it, and they had looked on putting condos around it, and that's where this meeting we're talking about.
Thank you. Yeah, John?
Thank you, Barry. Question on the, the conceptual study or plan that would be done, is it, would the intention be to look at the land itself, the geography, the soil composition? Is it also then going to look at highest and best use, which is looking at the market conditions? Is it encompassing all of that?
It, it's not gonna look at the soils, because we've already done a previous study on the soils there, John, and the soils aren't conducive to any septic systems. It would have to, it's looking at whether or not we can run the sewer up Lever's Lane into that property, but it is looking at what the maximum amount of units that can be placed on that property, whether it be through regular zoning or through a comprehensive permit. That's what they're studying. So I would say to highest and best use, I'd say yes.
Okay, thank you.
For housing.
One other comment?
One other comment, and it, there's been no studies done on this, but being in the business, if you look around today and you try to determine, you know, what projects are viable and what can work from an economic and a financial standpoint, in most of the communities around here, it's very difficult, and this is not directed specifically at, you know, what Allison, what you were saying, but office as an example. It's real hard to do an office project and make the rent support, the cost of building that. And then you look at what those office users, if there are any, and I can think of one, there's a company that's doing a large project right in Nagog. It's the last available commercial land up there at the top of the hill. But they're bringing in about 5,000 of their employees, and it's a bill to suit for themselves. But one of the reasons they're going there is because there's a whole bunch of amenities right there in the park. So, it's, it probably wouldn't take a lot of time and/or money to be able to weigh in on that. Professionals that would be doing that study and say, for these reasons, these things just, at least today, would not be viable in that location. I also feel like housing, and I'm not sure if this board or Mark, if you're considering as part of this, would there be an affordable component for the seniors? But, you know, there are a lot of seniors, we hear this year after year, that are having difficulty. They want to downsize, there's no places to move to. And if this is one of those things that can help residents of our community stay in town, be able to afford where they're living, live in spaces that are designed for that, 55 and older, 65, 75, 85, transitioning, I think that would be a very positive thing for the town.
The goal of the Select Board was to create affordable housing. It's one of their goals, and that's what started this whole conversation. We focus on 55 and up affordable, affordable component within 55 and up because we thought it made sense given the location.
Thank you. And Barry, one last question with this be, is it being considered as a public-private partnership? Or is this being considered as something that would just go out to the private sector?
Given, if I may?
Well, I mean, honestly, I think we would try to figure that out. And that would be hopefully one of the outcomes that we would get from that, is what's the best way to proceed, or?
That'd be one of the charges of the committee.
Thank you very much.
That's good input, thank you. John, you had your hand up next, Mr. Geiger.
Okay. I'm a little concerned about spending that money and only looking at, could we put a housing development in there? Because if it turns out we can't, we aren't getting any, we're gonna have to spend more money to find out what could we put in there? So, is there some way that this could be done in, where the analysis included, would include other uses that are feasible, as opposed to being exclusively looking at it, you know, this 16 acres?
Will you give me 30 seconds to go get a copy of the scope that I asked for to help answer your question?
Sure, I mean, it's not me, I don't make decisions.
Does anybody else have a comment in the meantime?
I was just gonna say that I assume that a study that says, no, you can't put housing there, is going to have some reasons, and that's going to give us information as to whether or not there is anything that we could put there. The fact that it is zoned RA, as Art pointed out, is a limitation that can be changed with a town meeting vote, but that doesn't, you know, it's not just like with a wave of the hands. I'm happy to make a friendly amendment to change the word conceptual plan to feasibility plan, if that makes anything, makes a difference for anyone.
Yeah, I mean, I'll amend, I'll second the amendment, just for the continuation here. I think that while we wait on Mark, I'm still curious, you know, how much longer does it take to do feasibility study considering, you know, 55 plus, how's this see, and/or commercial and/or this, right? I don't know if there's additional, right? Is it, is it cost another two grand, three grand? We want to do it anyway, the way I hear the board, we want to do it anyway for, so this committee can have all the ducks in a row. And we're not in a rush, since, at least I'm not aware we are.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, engineering services develop a conceptual plan depicting proposed development schemes for the property. The purpose of this plan will be to discuss the development potential, and he says you, the town, so that the plan can be given to others for use in establishing a viability of the project. They will prepare a conceptual plan depicting a residential development. The plan will show a detached condominium concept. So, that's what we asked for.
So, right off the bat, I would want to see not necessarily all detached, and does that make a difference?
So, you know, maybe if we go ahead with this, the committee can sit down and help develop what the scheme would be because there are obviously different ideas there.
So, what I said to, when you were out was, if, if a study comes back that says you can't do it at all, presumably they'll say why and what the reasons are, and that would give us data about other possible uses.
That's a good point.
I'm assuming the main thing that, or one of the main things to be understood is, how many units can be put on this? And maybe there, maybe the number varies depending on, you know, what kind of units, how large, how small, et cetera.
But you're not gonna get any information from this study, as I interpret what you've said, that would understand, one, is it feasible to bring sewer all the way up from 119 to there? Two, do we have the capacity?
Well, we'd have to work with the sewer.
We have the sewer capacity. Because I guess it's a little bit like where Kevin Lindemere was. If you can't, if we can't solve the septic problem, we're going nowhere.
He understands, no, no, the engineer understands that part of the plan is on how we would get sewer to that site. That's part of what can be developed on that property. So, that assumes we'd have to, he'd have to look at the sewer piece. I discussed that with him when I met with him.
But I didn't hear it, didn't I?
I think the non-waste piece of, non-waste, it's all non-waste, let me rephrase that. The, the critical piece of that study is, can sewer come up or not? And I think you're gonna need to know that and the capacity of that regardless of any, and that's, you can't make any choices or ideas about what's gonna go there, no matter what. If we were to reduce the scope to a feasibility study on sewer and sewer capacity to that area, I think that would satisfy everybody's requests here. It would move, it would keep, move the ball one step further down the road. And then, once we have that information, that could then be taken to the next committee to say, you know, we know we put sewer in, we know it has this capacity, what would you like to do? If we know we can't get sewer, we shut it, it's done, there's no point to form a committee.
Isn't there also, aren't there also issues with topography, knowing whether it could be developed?
It's a hill, so that's why I want to look at that as well.
And so, it's not, that's not, sewer isn't the only limitation, is I guess what my understanding was.
You're 100%.
So, somebody smarter than I am, please tell me, the two items, sewer being one of them, what's the second item we need to understand before we can move forward on any project?
What is the potential with the topography and everything else?
Put development on the land.
For development on that site.
So, is the land developable?
Pretty much, that's the question.
Not necessarily is it developable with condos, or developable with an office park, or is it developable with a, with an industrial machinist plant, or a solar city, you know, Buffalo, Gigawatt 3? But is it developable? Okay. Fran?
Hi, Fran Stanley, Housing Coordinator. I just received her feedback downstairs from the CBC, for looking at the application for if there's, if the housing trust for the town, whoever decides to ask CBC for money for a concept plan for the site. And I received that interesting feedback on what the road and how narrow it's going up past the country club. So, I wondered why the engineer immediately said condo plan, maybe because of the narrowness of the road. So, feasibility of the road to be built to standards that zoning demands for certain uses might be something to add to sewer.
So, I've got, if I heard you correctly, I've got three things now. Feasibility of the road, to support developments, feasibility of sewer to support developments, and the feasibility of the topography to support any type of development.
We learn a lot.
Yes.
And that, in a nutshell, has no bearing on what might get done, and there's no, there's no pre-conceptuals. It's money that's gonna have to be spent anyway if we're gonna go down the road and figure out anything. And it's, it's well spent. My recommendation at this point is to, is to ask Mark to go back to, I apologize, was it?
Ducharme.
And ask for a quote for those three things. You know, understand the, you know, the challenges of the road, the supporting developments, understand the challenges of sewage and supporting developments, understand topography and supporting developments. And based on what comes back from that, my recommendation to this board would be to decide whether or not to form a committee. Because there's no point to form a committee if all that comes back as, you can't really do anything here. Is that feasible, Mark?
Well, that was my original, that was my original question. So, what I would ask the board to do tonight is if I talk to Ducharme and Dillis, and for $4,500 they can do those three things for me, you give me the authorization to have him do that. If he says it's more, I need to come back to you and discuss it.
So, does my original motion cover that, or do you?
No.
No, I think you have to withdraw that original motion and make it perfectly specific.
Withdraw that?
So, withdraw, there's no motion on the floor currently.
You want me, I mean, I'd happy to put this in a second motion. I move that, authorize the town manager to spend $4,500.
Or less.
Or less.
Up to?
Up to $4,500 from the town hall budget for a feasibility study for potential development in covering sewer, topography, and road access issues on rotten country club property.
I'll second that.
Very good, yes, thank you.
That's a good motion.
Moved and seconded. New motion on the floor for discussion.
I just have a question, and I don't know very much about the current layout of the country club.
I go by it all the time, I'm gonna tell you.
Well, I drive by it, yes.
I'm taking you on a tour at your first possible convenience, and it's not snowing, or sub-degree weather.
Is there potential to even consider, you know, if Whole Six could be moved and that creates a different, I mean, is that?
If you can't get sewer to the area, then, right, I don't know that you'd consider whether you can move Whole Six. If you can't do the topography, what good does Whole Six, you know, it's all on a hill, it's all hills.
Understood.
So, I, my guess is you'd get those answers, and if you feel like you don't have those answers, because these things, let me rephrase it this way. If these three things are greenlit, I think your question is viable. If one or more of these things aren't greenlit, then, you know, the question is irrelevant because we can't do much. Unless you really don't, unless you want to say, what if this, what if that, what if that? And then you start talking about spending a lot of money on what ifs.
My guess is that if we do this, we get to the point where then we, to be fair to the town and ourselves, we really are more creatively like, okay, does it make sense to confine ourselves to this piece of land? Or if we just did this and this, we could get, you know, could make things work better. And I think that's the step that, that would be a good step to take at that point, but not at this point.
Mr. Chairman, would you allow remote participation by the fifth member?
Yes, we have a challenge in this, in that it's very disruptive, and it's, I'm not sure how legal it is to go in and out of a meeting and be here and not be here, plus the minute taking on that is very arduous. So, do you want to ask Mr. Deegan if he'd like to remain for the entire meeting, or at least the public portion of it, and exit at the workshop? I got some feedback last time about the nebulous nature of the in and outs.
He can't, he can't participate long, so he wanted me to go on the record saying that he is in favor of moving forward with the, with the motion without commercial, looking at the housing piece, is where he's at.
Okay. The original proposal?
The original.
All right, okay. So, the motion on the table is three variables, roads, sewer, topography, with an open ended question of, you know, can we develop here?
And it would have to be RA because that's what it's currently zoned.
Right.
Right?
Well.
No, I mean, taking, taking zoning off the table. We understand we'd have to zone differently if we have to. Let's, let's not put that off.
Oh, okay, all right.
Just say, what's the, you know?
What's the development?
What's development potential?
Gotcha.
For this site, given the roads, the sewer, the topography.
Gotcha.
I mean, this is at a high level.
Yeah.
That's why I think $4,500.
It may all be feasible, but when you do the economics of it.
Right.
It could not, you know, one of the things could cause it a no-go further. But I think we should move along on this.
All right. Taking that as a prompt, I'll take a vote. All's in favor of the motion, just going to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
I heard three, four, one against. So, Mark, that's authorization up to $4,500, else we'll see you back here.
I'll report to the board as soon as I have an answer. Mr. Chairman, taking us through the first of the year, we would meet tonight, next week, the week after, the week after that. We would have a two-week hiatus on the Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. And then, we would start up again on January 7th with the joint meeting with the FinCon to receive the town manager's budget. Is that schedule acceptable to the board? Unless you want to meet Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, I'd be in favor of that. And if something comes up that we have to meet later that week, we can always schedule an emergency meeting, or with 48-hour notice.
Yeah, so my, so my question to the board is, the week of the 24th, so clearly, does anybody have any challenges with the 26th, 3rd, 10th, and 17th?
I don't hear it, I don't hear it on the 26th.
I know. Again, those are regular scheduled meetings, let's make sure we get those, let's get those off the table right now, and we're all good with those, right?
I thought you were saying Jan, December 26th.
No, sorry about that. So, the 24th, of course, is a Monday, the 25th be Christmas Day would be, which is a holiday we're not allowed to meet. The 26th would be a Wednesday, and the 27th would be a Thursday. I do not know people's travel plans, I don't know the board's quorum. Does anybody have any desire to meet that week of Christmas?
I cannot meet that week of Christmas.
So, I've heard from one.
I'd prefer not to, to meet on Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve.
No, we're not gonna meet on any of those days, I understood those. But I'm talking about the 26th or 27th.
If we have a need.
All right, so we'll put those out there.
I'm open to that if we have a need, and we have a quorum.
NSC day, NSC days.
I will not be.
Yeah, I understood there's one member already gone, so we are close to our quorum requirement. Following that, the 2nd or 3rd of January would also be days where I see we could meet if we needed to meet. What type of hardship does the 2nd or 3rd put on you during budget preps?
I'll be done.
Okay, so that's fine.
Well, if you did that, would you move the joint meeting with the FinCon up, or would it just be something?
Yeah.
If something needed to be.
It'd be a small thing, right, that we need handled, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that for me, where the kids are back in school that week, it's much easier the 2nd or 3rd than it is the 27th, 28th kind of thing, but?
I also tend to lean towards the 2nd or 3rd, let's give, let's give ourselves some time off from things and time to enjoy the holidays. So, if we do have to meet after the 17th and before the 7th, it would be the 2nd or 3rd, depending on members' availability and other, other situations. Is everybody okay with that, is it tentative schedule? And I'll make that call hopefully by, I don't know when I'll do my other call. I have to make that call several days in advance, right?
At least 48 hours.
Yeah, so.
So, you probably have to make it by the 28th of?
Of the 2nd or 3rd, which of those two days is preferable to the team?
Third.
I hear Thursday, the 3rd.
That's Thursday.
Is that acceptable to the, to the, to the town manager?
If that's what the board wants.
Okay, so, we will have a, we can have a tentative, if needed, meeting on Thursday, January 3rd. Is that, is that okay with everybody?
It is with me.
Yeah.
Okay. You were looking at scans at me, so I wasn't sure. All right, so that's settled, and thank you very much, yes?
Could I just ask if you can fill in tentatively what some, what agenda items are gonna be on those meetings?
I was playing Becky, that's a great point. Barry, with your permission, I'd like to talk to you in our weekly meeting this week to map out the next three meeting agendas.
That's exactly what I was going to say. That's exactly what I was going to say. Now that we know our schedule and everybody's can be here, um, what we're gonna do is try to map out what we're gonna do in those meetings in December, uh, when we get through, and send that out in advance, and people have things they actually have to get done before the end of the year, well, let's, let's, we'll put those on the discussion with me. Um, all right, next, um, we would like to, uh, accept a donation.
Yeah, the descendants of patriots who fought in the Revolutionary War, um, are, have donated.
Thank you for that.
How much money? Twenty-five hundred bucks?
Five, five hundred.
That's all five.
Is that five, oh, I'm sorry, it says it right there, five hundred dollars, so I'd ask the board to accept that gift and authorize the town accountant to establish a gift fund for that purpose.
I have a question.
Yes.
Didn't we just, uh, get a gift for the old burying ground from the filming company?
Yeah, that was twenty-five hundred dollars, this is another five. I, I'd like to have you vote to accept each, each gift.
Right, I understand that, but why do we have to establish a gift fund?
I think she has a separate, this is specifically for, um, this is specifically for Joshua Bentley. The other one was whatever they wanted to spend the money on, so this is a little bit different.
I get it, okay.
It's a good question.
Right, this is, this is, the individual was asking.
This is the picture Bentley marker.
Directly to Joshua Bentley, so you have to establish a power for that.
I see, okay.
So I'll make the motion that Mark requested.
It's been moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Do we have any concept of the order of magnitude of the cost to do this work?
Leave that up to them. I'll leave it up to the committee to tell me, the old burying ground committee to tell me what they need.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, um, so moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, any opposed, any abstentions? I heard unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to go through the, if it's okay with you to go through the, um, ongoing issues list, I have a couple of updates.
Yeah.
Um, first, the senior center building project. I am pleased to report the steel structure is up on, uh, as, as they predicted it would be. We're very excited about that, so, um, progress at the senior center is moving on quite, quite, uh, nicely. With regards to item, uh, G, the task force on the fire department twenty-four seven, the committee voted tonight to have a public forum that is going to be held on December eleventh, which is a Tuesday at seven PM at the, uh, Groton Center Fire Station at, uh, forty-five Farmers Row to receive public input and go over the, uh, information that they have, um, that they have been working on. Uh, so I would encourage everybody to please, um, plan on attending that with information. These committees work very hard, they've put a lot of information together. Yes, Becky?
Are they planning to put any information out before that?
Tomorrow morning. I will post a, uh, an informational summary from the committee. I will send it to the Groton Herald, I will put it on the town's homepage, the town's Facebook page, we'll tweet it out. We will send it, uh, to everybody and their brother to, to inform the public of this December eleventh meeting. So, yes, Becky, to answer your question, yes.
Okay.
With regards to item number F, the Florence Roach Elementary School feasibility study, um, there is a meeting on Wednesday, uh, December fifth at six-thirty. It will be the first meeting that Allison and I will be attending, representing this board on that, uh, committee.
Thank you.
So we're looking forward to that, uh, to getting that started on, on December, uh, please somebody get the day right, Allison, it's Wednesday the fifth, yeah?
Yep, no, it's the fourth, I thought.
Yeah, I think the, the email today came in, it was the fifth, right?
Yeah, I saw it change.
Yeah, there was a second one, something clarification. I can find it.
Oh, it's Tuesday the fourth. I, I'm, I'm so out of it, I don't know what I'm doing. Tuesday the fourth at six-thirty, I apologize for the confusion. So Allison and I hopefully will show up at the right meeting at the right time.
One of us will get there.
One of us will get there. Uh, so that's going on. And then the final thing, Mr. Chairman, before you go into liaison reports in minutes, um, we started budget kickoff today. Um, John, uh, joined us, which I was very pleased to have John here to see how we go about doing, uh, the budgets. We met with the, uh, library, which is always a very informative, uh, process. With them, we covered a lot of ground with them. We met with IT, we met with the town clerk, we met with the land use, uh, officials, we met with, uh, Bob Coleman from the cable. Uh, and I, I would say we're off to a good start, uh, reviewing the budgets and trying to get an understanding of what the department's needs are for next year, while staying within the two-point-five-four percent, uh, guidance from the selectmen, the select board and the finance committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
All right, um.
Can I ask?
Yes.
A question that came up. Um, I am unclear, the school district has, I know we've seen agendas, there's something happening on Wednesday of this week that I heard different things about. Could somebody clarify what that meeting is?
So my understanding is they're having a forum tomorrow, or Wednesday night. Uh, the first portion of it, I believe, is to discuss potentially making changes to the full-day kindergarten, uh, program. Currently, our, the cost that we charge, that the district charges parents is in excess of, of our market basket district, so there's going to be some discussion of what changes could be made and, and kind of how things would be impacted. And then the second portion of the forum is around potential logistics to change the high school start time. So one is six-thirty to seven-thirty, and the other, the second one is seven-thirty to eight-thirty at the high school library.
Yeah, I set that agenda out today. I s- I saw that, I guess I thought I'd heard earlier that the focus on that meeting was different, but I don't remember what I, what it was, so, because I was the, I'm the confused one. Thank you.
Okay, um, any liaison reports from the board?
Can I?
Yeah, Allison, I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to under, under other business.
Yes.
I, it took my brain a little while to kick in at the beginning of this meeting, um, so I wanted to go back and just offer a formal apology both to the town manager and to everyone who was watching our last meeting. Um, I kind of publicly and for the first time put two and two together. Um, it was information that had been shared with us previously, and I, for whatever reason, two and two was still equaling five in my mind. Um, so everyone got to watch the rather awkward process as I began to understand what had been presented previously. So I apologize for my responses, in particular, my, my very careless word choice. Where I, I threw out that I felt the town manager was manipulating certain things, um, which was careless and inappropriate on my part, that is certainly not, an accusation or a, uh, the word I should have been using, because that was not my intent. So I apologize, Mark, to you and to your team.
Thank you.
Um, and hope that folks will bear with me as I figure out what I'm doing up here.
I appreciate that.
Would you know, let me know?
Yeah, well, whoever figures it out first can share, that would be great.
Uh, all right, thanks, Allison.
Absolutely.
And appreciate that reflective nature that we all have and go back and try to evaluate our lives in the scope of this elected post. Select Board Liaison Reports. I see no, uh, hands being urgently raised, so let's move on to minutes. Uh, the regular, uh, does anybody like to make a motion? Anybody have any questions, concerns, challenges to the minutes?
So I will make a motion that we approve this regularly scheduled meeting minute of October twenty-second, October twenty-ninth, and November fifth, twenty-eighteen, as presented.
Uh, were there any, uh, absences?
All four of you were, all three, all four of those meetings. Barry, you participated remotely at the beginning of one and then entered, so you're.
That's right, okay, okay, great. All right, thank you, that's the only guy I wanna know.
Can I borrow your pen, Becky?
All right, then, been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any challenges? All right, all those in favor of approving these three minutes? Sigmas saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I heard a unanimous, thank you. All right, um, at this time, unless there's any objections, I'd like to enter into our workshop to establish calendar year twenty-nineteen goals of the Select Board. Is there any objection to that at this time?
Is this when Allison gave me permission to leave the meeting?
I think it is.
Is that sta- is that still standing? I just had a long day.
I think so. Um, I had distributed, or John had distributed for me, I kind of re-sorted the department head goals into kind of categories, rather than viewing them by person. So I don't know if there's anything, Mark, that you wanna throw in on that, kind of, before you.
Well, I, you know, the, the, the department head goals are far-ranging, uh, some are, um, as Allison put it to me when we met, apple pie type goals.
Yep.
Some are very, um, are, are, I think, really solid goals. Um, the, I like to, I like how Allison put this into, uh, categories, which I think might help you, um, take care of your, uh, take care of your goals. For example, you know, the employee departmental development goals, those don't, those don't affect the selectmen, those are what the employees are trying to, uh, accomplish, but I think you have a good, a good starting point here, and I have to tell you, I looked at, uh, the goals that Becky has, has drafted up, as well as the goals that John has drafted up, and I know that some of these things I've talked to you about, Allison, as well, that John has on, on his list. I think you have a really good list to start moving forward. I would just caution the board not to have too many goals, um, because you, you end up not accomplishing a lot, because you have too much that you're trying to accomplish. I would have the, I would have the goals more, um, more focused, uh, 'cause I, I think you have a good set of goals starting here, um, so I, I love it.
Okay, um, who's gonna volunteer to kind of, uh, collate today's triage, you know, potential goals, is the way I'm gonna say this.
And work with me to put them in the final form?
Yeah, and then we need someone to work with Mark to put those in together in the final form, uh, considering I'm gonna be traveling tomorrow until next Monday, I cannot volunteer to do that, so I apologize.
Mark, do you have the ability, before you go to, to get?
Oh, yeah, I can, I can.
A document or something set up there, and then I'm, I'm happy to.
So I didn't have your, I don't have your form, I could get that before I leave and put it up here.
We've all got a paper copy.
You have a paper copy.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, to try and.
So so that we could type on?
Right, exactly. That's what this means when I do this in here, because I wanna type, I wanna type.
So you wanna, you wanna Word?
You want a Word document?
Yeah, do something, and then I'll.
Yeah, we need it with Mark, we need it with keyboard and mouse down here.
And then Allison, what you can do is you can save it, um, or you can, you can save it and then email it?
Yeah, that's fine. And then, I mean, I'm, I'm also fine, I think that that will be very close to, if not the minutes, so I'm more than comfortable to morph that into minutes and allow Dawn to depart as well.
You're throwing us both out, I love it.
But Judy has to stay.
Judy has to stay. You know how to use Word, you need a Word, I'm just kidding.
You never know, Mark. I would never commit to being sure of anything.
Yes. With my sweater, no, my winter jacket.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
It's better tonight.
So.
You really are free to leave, Dawn. You really are free to leave.
I'll have to ask her twice. What do you want us to do with your laptops and everything, Dawn?
You can just leave, I can come back.
Sure? Okay. Um, Noah, you can't leave. We're still on, this is, this is still a public meeting, it's just a closed workshop.
But does it need to be televised?
It's, it's a public meeting of the board, it should be televised, yeah. Workshops, our workshops like this typically are where we set our goals, they have been in the past.
That's fine.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you asking.
You don't wanna find out afterward that you could have gone home.
I thought that we did our goals on the Monday after Thanksgiving last year, too.
Thank you, Dawn.
Um, okay, uh, excuse me. So, what we have in front of us, we have, uh, great, fully accepted recommendations by two members. Um, clearly, we do not have a fifth member here who would also weigh in on this, so, and we do deny it is merely a draft idea of things that perhaps three or more of us agree on and wanna be part of our calls. So let's proceed down that pathway. Um, would anybody like to review, would, would it make sense to review the department head goals, to see if there's any of those you wish to support first, and I can just go down them and, you know, asterisk them to start with as a kind of rapid triage, and then we can come back to them?
I haven't had a chance to go over these goals with Mark, um, and, um, there's some of them that I, I just feel really strongly need to be attended to.
At the board level? At the board level?
Uh, at the level of, how do we write goals?
Right.
Okay?
So, so you're saying some of the department?
I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but for the police department, all right, we've been for, I think, the last ten years showing every time, we're gonna go get certified, we're gonna go get certified. And I look in here, and I see another, we're gonna go get certified. I wanna see, and I think Mark ought to be anxious to see.
Yeah.
You know, those are the kinds of things I wanna go over with him, because a lot of this is so abstract, um, you know, you could bump into it and not realize you'd completed it.
Smart goals. You're looking for some time, some measurements, some metrics around some of these.
Some of them won't lend themselves to it, but some of them sure do, and it's not in here.
All right, so this workshop officially isn't to discuss the?
I know.
Okay, goals of the town, but more what I was asking, is there any, is there any purpose in reviewing this for inspiration on goals that we would want to have for ourselves in support of one or more departments that have a goal?
I read through the, all of the goals that I, nothing jumped out at me as like, oh yeah, I wanna jump on that, so my answer, I guess, would be not particularly.
To me, it was more kind of about aligning the, the categories of goals, so that we, you know, if we have two financial goals and they have twenty, they're all financial goals, as opposed to if we have, you know, if we as a board come up with six goals about employee development, that's kind of a red flag.
So, so your, your, um, forgive my wording, academic study of this was to say, well, here's the general buckets these things tend to fall into.
Exactly.
Perhaps that's a good place for the board to go.
Right, and that, and that was, I mean, one of our goals for this year was to try and align goals from the select board to the town manager and to the department heads. So this was kind of my first attempt. It certainly wasn't a viable exercise after everyone's goals were decided upon. So I thought maybe if we took these and kind of agreed at a high level to the buckets at least, then.
Right, I think.
We could organize ourselves.
Probably qualified that discussion when we took that item off, the agenda was that this is kind of backwards, you do it from the top down.
Right.
Really wanna understand which one of these we need to be politically in support of, and then we can develop our own that we're gonna push back down, right? But you can't, you gotta, you gotta have some that come up, that need our political support and our, our ability to move, uh, in different ways than employees can, and then those that we can then do, uh, purely from a policy basis.
Right.
Um, all right, so here's what I'll ask, since uh, since these are in buckets and Allison's consumed them, and, and I haven't heard that you have any particular ones you wanted to call forward, uh, and then Becky says there's none, she wants to call forward, and you still would like to review them, um, we're gonna have to put this on another agenda to have a conversation with our fifth member before we can do anything with our goals, so.
Right.
There is some time to go through this, and if you change your mind and you'd like something added, um, just pitch it to, uh, Mark and Dawn, and, and we'll get it on the list, uh, additional items for the list.
Yep.
Okay? Is that, is that acceptable to everybody?
I put my list together as primarily a contribution to possibilities.
Right, no.
Right.
I'm not married to any of them, although I can see value in them all, but we've gotta look at all the other op, all the other potential goals and then prioritize, I think.
So, one way that I like to see this done is since you've put some time, um, you deserved the opportunity to kind of explain them. Becky or John, who would like to go first?
Doesn't matter.
I'm happy to go first.
All right, so John, um, can you, uh, we can read it. It seems pretty straightforward, number one, but is there anything that's not straightforward?
I guess I'll ask if there's any questions about what that was, what that's aimed at.
Um, so I, I did not share mine in advance, but I have them. Um, I had a very similar one to this. I referenced that I would love to see this happen, um, in conjunction with perhaps town council, with the MMA, and then in in reviewing perhaps other towns, so that we've got some best management practices in there. One of the things I feel like we come up against periodically is that we're just completely missing a policy of some flavor. Um, you know, I think the ones we have certainly merit a review. Generally, they're, they're pretty good, it's just, I think we need to compare ourselves against other communities to see what, what holes there are that we're not even aware of.
So if I heard you right, what you're saying is you like John's, but you'd like it expanded to include perhaps policies that we don't even know we should have.
Right.
Well, and I recall that, um, when we interviewed town council people, Brooks and Durans, specifically said they would review all of our policies when they came on board. So, uh, this is, I think this is an excellent conceptual goal to fit with that. I hope that they, I mean, I wonder where they stand on. I hope that they, I mean, I wonder where they stand on that. And in addition to what you said, I would like to make sure that our website, the town website, that the ones that get deleted or are found to be out of date and no longer relevant get removed from the website, so that when you go searching on the website, you don't come up with something that's completely out of date.
So I could say add a sure appropriate documentation and visibility. I think that'll, okay, nevermind, we'll have a presentation in December which should help with that idea.
And I think if we rely on, if we, this seems like a really time-consuming goal, or a really large goal, but if we start by asking town council to tell us where the problems are, what we're lacking, and where we have overlap, that might help us. If it's any ambitious goal, that's the word I was looking for.
Okay. Any further commentary on John's first goal? All right, moving on to the second one, any questions about that?
Kind of related.
I think he's copying me.
He's what?
I think he's copying me.
Oh, you had the same idea?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a makes, it's a goal that makes sense. I also think it's ambitious, it's a lot to bite off, to do those two things.
Well, I mean, that's good, that's okay.
We could ask the personnel board, maybe, to help with number two?
It's not a personnel item, this is a policy item. Do we, it's... The way I read this, and forgive me for putting words in your mouth, John, is that there are a lot of appointed committees out there that have charters that may no longer be relevant, or maybe there's some committees out there which we can't find their charters. Or, let's make sure that we got all our I's dotted and T's crossed, and they're contemporary and relevant.
Yeah, well, it seems to me we create a lot of committees, we create a lot of individuals assigned to certain things, some of which is required by law, some of which is required, I don't know what. And we're not very good at retiring them, like, we don't need them anymore.
Sure.
And so this would really be to go through and determine whether or not we really need that committee, or individual doing, or appointed, and if it is a yes, then let's make sure we have a good, clear charter in 2018, 2019, I think.
When you say charter, you mean committee charge?
Yeah, committee charge.
I think there's a lot of merit in going through as a first pass. I don't think we need, you know, someone has to volunteer and say, "Hey, I don't think we need any of these committees, so improve me, we do." And that would be a great first pass, right? Let's get rid of the fluff that's just taking up space. I shouldn't say to people, it's more that the paperwork is taking up space, because the committee's no longer necessary, and these people are appointed with no, we're wasting their volunteer hours. I'd rather reassign the volunteer hours to other effective parts of town.
I think Mark has done some of this. I think he, I recall him either asking us or telling us that there were a couple of committees that were no longer needed, and therefore we didn't renew them, because technically, we renew most committees in June. But this is another step that we should do.
Yeah, well, if the ones that didn't need to be renewed were decided in by March or April, then we would not have to renew them in June. And it'd be a good first step to lessen that workload. And I know we asked Mark to do a lot, and frankly, I don't know that we need him to focus on this. You know, I think this could be something that we can take on and make it...
No, I was just saying that it hasn't been completely neglected
Absolutely not.
to reduce committees.
I...
And I hope I didn't suggest that
No, you did not.
in what I wrote.
No.
Didn't intend to.
I find, too, that, to me, having a list of this kind of thing with a, you know, ultimately ideally, you can laugh at me there, okay?
I'm not laughing at all.
With, you know, the kind of a formation date, an initial chart, you know, some sort of one-stop shopping for this. I feel like I'm often finding that a lot of work has been done, that how managers already done this, it's well aware of it. But when I say, "Well, what committees do we have?", there's kind of no master list, or there's no resource.
Right, because you can look in the town report, and you see some things, you can look on the town website, and you see some other things. And somebody pointed out to me a page on the town website that is not officially committees, but it is so badly out of date.
Right.
So...
And part of this, I mean, one of the things that I had on my list that I'll throw out there, because to me it's overarching, a lot of these, is I think that we need to create some sort of onboarding binder packet, PDF, whatever, for new members. And that this, to me, along with potentially an updated policy, you know, it is all on the website somewhere, if you can find it.
Maybe.
Maybe. But if we had kind of a printed, you know, "Here is the controlling, you know, handbook of selectboarding", that that would be really helpful.
Like wakeboarding?
It is. Well, I was trying to...
I know, too.
I wanted to avoid a reference to any sort of religious tome.
Yeah.
So can we look at number three?
So, I actually, yeah, so I'll come back to that, because Allison, I added a fifth here in relation to what you just said, but I'll come back to that. All right, so number three is...
I don't actually understand this, John.
Well, let me see if I can give you a simple example. I went around and visited with each department head, spent an hour or two getting to know them, letting them get to know me, and gaining more knowledge about what went on in a department. And as I went through that, I learned that at least three times in this building, the data that makes, that the payroll data after people have submitted their timecards is re-entered by different departments. And I've looked around, and I see a lot, a lot more of that. You look into this budget process that we're going through. And by the way, I was very impressed with the preparation that individual department heads had done. It's very detailed, and they had done their homework, they were well-prepared. But you look around at just that process, and it's spreadsheet going over there, and then they're entering that into another spreadsheet. And then this morning, there were issues that, well, something that was, Mark thought was upright, had been changed by somebody else, and it's just crazy. And I don't, I want the town function to recognize that we need to pay attention to these processes, and make sure they're working well, and add different things into jobs, and pay attention to this. And I'm not sure I'm getting very much traction.
Is this at all, in the Matrix report, there was a recommendation that the town used something called Munis?
No, it's actually Tyler Technologies' product, and they own Munis, Tyler Technologies.
Okay, so to use a certain software product that we're not using.
They certainly offer that, and it's a whole integration of one stop. You enter it once, and you don't enter it again. And every department that needs to see it can get to it, and you can regulate who can make a change to it, and it's all recorded, who made that change, and all the... But two weeks later, after they were here, it came up this morning, Mark hasn't followed up with the salespeople from there to get the price.
But do you think...
Michael Chasen hasn't followed up with them. Now, we're bringing somebody else in on the third, which is fine. But we just, it's not in any of their goals.
But my question is, if we were to adopt that software package, that or someone else's?
That or something like it would begin to address this.
Would that address this?
Yes.
Yeah, any platform-oriented ERP slash modular system? ERP is enterprise resource planning, which is, you know...
And it's called planning, but it just integrates all your financial stuff into one integrated whole. So, I just think the town needs to, said differently, I don't think the town can afford to ignore the kind of opportunities that this brings. You want to hold headcount where it is, for sure. We need to, and you want to do new things, we've got to find the capacity within our current workforce. And reducing the number of times we manually enter data
Right.
is a way that industry started fifteen years ago, looking at, or twenty years ago.
And I think that this, I mean, and John and I were on the school committee and enjoyed this, the fallout from this forever, it felt like, you know, these kinds of errors can be very minor, you know, appearing in a meeting and saying, "Oh, we didn't correct this over here, we need to update that." Or, you know, as the school district found several years ago, the wrong salary schedule can be entered into the spreadsheet in the wrong place or in the right place, and no one catches it, and you've got a million-dollar problem. You know, I think that this also, there's tremendous risk here around, you know, everyone who's here now is, has longevity, has skill, has aptitude in their position, but if something should happen, for whatever reason, and any one person takes that knowledge that they possess with them, it could leave a gap that we don't even know what we've lost, kind of thing.
I remember asking at some meeting, various department heads were there, if other, they had, were familiar with this Munis system. And the people who spoke said, yes, they were, and they thought it was good. So I think you're right, we should move forward on this, this is a good goal.
Well, yeah, I mean, we don't want to take, change the procurement, you know, I mean, there's lots of systems out there, and there's lots of reasons to go with different systems, and...
Right, but to push for something.
I think, certainly our IT department would appreciate some guidance on this, as well as Mark. And I would be more comfortable prior to adding this as a goal to understand what the current project is. If they are actively bringing in vendors, I want to understand if there's, what the project is and the scope of it, and maybe we can just add some support to that, and give them some focus and visibility.
I sat through the, it was about a seven-hour presentation, I sat through that with them.
Seven hour?
The Munis came in, yeah.
Yes, the Munis came in, and they did a very good job of explaining the, a complex system. And we brought up each department, and they showed the people from the department, you know, what it could do, and answer their questions. And now they're bringing in another company called Vader, I think it is, on December 3rd, which is a much smaller company. But they have a product that's primarily used just in Massachusetts, where Tyler Technologies' product is used nationwide, that they want to take a look at. But...
I think that, I'm sorry.
I don't think they, like, I don't think they have a goal by which, when they want to make it, you know, they want to make a decision. And I can see this just keep bouncing down the road.
I would, I would, I have a challenge with the idea of saying by 2020 to reduce, because we don't know what the cost impact of that versus the ROI that can be. And part of the challenge can be, what's the cost impact versus the savings? I know what the entry does, I know, you know, I solution this type of software all the time for organizations. These things can get very expensive, not just in software, but in personnel implementation, as you all know, John. I certainly would say, I certainly would support a goal that said, "Make a decision on go, no-go, you know, build by, you know, whatever, by a certain time." I wouldn't necessarily want to put that we're gonna use software to reduce this without having first made that decision and evaluated it clearly.
Well, who makes that decision? Does the select board make that decision? Does the town manager come with a recommendation?
Well, I think that's part of what we're not all clear about.
And ultimately, town media makes that decision, right? Because we're talking about expenditure of funds.
Right.
We would advise town media, and whether or not we thought it was warranted, town manager would advise us whether or not he thought it was warranted.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Right, but somebody's got to write that up, somebody's got to put effort into collecting the data.
And someone's got to say, "We want it."
Right.
And we want it.
So some of that, I mean, Mike Chasen has in his goals, "In compliance with the Matrix audit and directive of the select board and town manager, investigate whether Munis or related software makes sense for the town."
But even that isn't correct, because they're looking at other, they're looking at other sources, too.
Well, that's what it says, "Or related software makes sense." But I think that it's going to be very difficult for Mike Chasen to say, "Oh yeah, this is great, I think we should go forward with this." "Oh, and by the way, it's got a $800,000 cost." That's kind of above his comfort level. So I think if we had a goal that were to, you know, to garner, get this information in, and then potentially make a recommendation for a future operating cost, a capital, you know, kind of understanding, you know, obviously, he can understand and help us with the technology side of it, and then we need to understand the, you know, what's the initial data entry cost, what's the training costs, you know, all those pieces.
A good vendor will put all that together for you, by the way, but...
But I think that, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I'd be comfortable putting a date for having that decision of something that we could, you know, I think that having a date of March might be reasonable for having that decision.
Yeah, so if we, I mean, not to, I'm sure we're gonna be wordsmithing later, but
Absolutely.
essentially take out the second sentence on John's goal here, but say that we want to move forward with decision-making on this. I think it's a joint decision, the select board, the town manager, and obviously, the people who are going to use the system have to have been invited to give us some input, which it sounds like that's a little bit what's happening. But we just got to say that it's important to us to move forward on this.
Well, I think we need somebody to say, "By a certain date, we're gonna give you a report." And it should be, you know, a priority.
Is March too late?
Let's wait to hear, I mean, I would suggest, if they're already doing something about it, let's make it clear, we want to move forward on this, tell us when you think you will have a report, so we can put that in as our goal.
Okay. So rather than putting a date of March, we'll say, you know, Mike, when you think you can get that to us?
Well, I would say, just, we need to discuss with Mark, and say, "When can we expect a report?" We want to put that in the goal.
All right.
I'm fine with all that.
All right. I actually had a question for you, and we're on number four. I need some definition, some clarity around the volume-based or task-based iteration of at least half our customer interactions. Are you talking customer interactions by volume, or are you talking by department task kind of thing?
Somebody comes in to get a passport.
Yeah.
A new passport. Somebody comes in, that's a transaction.
That is a transaction.
Somebody comes in to renew a passport, that's a transaction.
Right.
Somebody comes in to get a building permit, that's a transaction.
I understand.
So it's those types of transactions that I'm targeting at.
I understand, okay, so...
And I'm not, and so the measurement would be, you know, in my mind, you know, pick either some of your largest volume ones, or the ones where we think we're seeing the most complaints, and get some of those going, and then add additional ones over time.
All right.
So you want to try to, you want to start the process of putting in place some sort of customer satisfaction
Measurement.
measurement tool.
And opportunity for people to provide feedback as to how we can do better, how they think we can do better, suggestions.
So, I actually know, at least with what I do, that three relates to four. When you have a system in place that's tracking this type of information, and you have interactions with the public, you can have it automate that type of survey structure.
I mean, little rotten neighbors that I happen to be involved with, right, after each service is rendered, the person who got the service is asked to provide
Right.
an assessment of how well it went. And we don't always get them back from everybody, but there's an opportunity there for us to use user-fed data to think about where we can do better. And I'd just like to see some of that get built into the process here.
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say that we... Yeah, I mean, I was gonna say that we replaced some windows a year or so ago, and did the permitting online, and you get the, the automatic, you know. Oh, your permit request has been received, oh, it's been reviewed, oh, it's, you know, so adding on a questionnaire at the end of that would be fairly straightforward. So there are definitely some areas where it could be.
And we may have to be creative about, you know, uh, uh, finding ways to encourage people to return it. You know, maybe, uh, we'll steal an idea from some retailer and, you know, uh, once a quarter, we'll pull things out of a hat and.
Well, but obviously.
Shake your hand or something.
If a, a computerized program for managing data has a component for this, that would be.
Yeah, but honestly, our goal here is not to get in the weeds of how it gets done, but to say what we want done.
Right.
And I would, I would say that we would like to get, we would like to start, begin the process of getting feedback on town services as the, uh, you know, quickly CSAT.
To measure, to measure customer satisfaction.
CSAT on town services.
It's something other than word of mouth.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, you know, verifyable, try, you know, I, I, I understand, yeah.
Okay, I hope that.
Technology enabled CSAT on town services would be how I would characterize that, right?
But is it C, customer satisfaction?
So CSAT, yeah, CSAT, there's two factors, you do MPS and CSAT, customer stat is pretty clear. And then you have also the idea of, you have a net promoter score, which means how satisfied someone is with your, with the town enough to talk to others about it. And both those factors matter very, very highly in how you're doing as a company or as a service provider.
Staples, lizard, orange juice, are you?
Well, as a consumer, I have to say, I, I think this is, it is a good idea for us to explore this, however. The vast majority of customer satisfaction surveys that I fill out, I figure, I feel are not asking the right questions, they're quite useless, they're designed to give only positive results.
Well, then they're poorly designed.
Maybe they are.
That is, that is part of the issue.
Designing them is an art, so rather than, somebody here's sitting down, we may have to have someone who's a professional creating these things.
Yeah, it is, it is, there are.
Right.
There are best practices.
Right, so.
And buy a few hours of time for them to put a really good one together.
Right.
Anyway, that's where.
All right, so we're almost done with John's, but one thing I heard that I didn't, um, that I took out of that discussion, and it may already be on Allison's, is an onboarding packet for new members.
Uh, right.
Right.
Um, I certainly think that's probably one of the most, um, useful goals we could ever do, uh, for our board and the future of this town.
I, I think in addition to serving as an onboarding packet, it then potentially becomes a tremendous resource for citizens who wanna know.
Yes.
How is this decided, what are the policies around this, who does that, I mean, it, it.
Yes.
Yeah, in addition to allowing for a fa- a more rapid ramp or a reference for people to go look at, or even members haven't covered anything before, you might refresh your memory on something. It, it does have an incredible transparency asset to the town, so, um, I love that idea, and I think it has more than one facet, and I think it's a very appropriate goal, uh, that's my opinion. Uh, all right, um. John, thank you, these are very, um, global in nature, but not bowling the ocean, so I, I appreciate the thought that went, went into those.
You're welcome.
Uh, Becky, would you like to review yours?
Sure. Um, so, the first one is to achieve green community designation at the fall twenty nineteen town meeting, that's the goal. One of the, how do we get there, one step, the first step is to, well, the first official step in that is to, uh. The town has to approve the use of the stretch code at a town meeting. Uh, the, the program has an annual, uh, joining component, what, annual, you know, you, you either get in this year or you wait another year. So it's, uh, that's the timetable, uh.
Can I, um, soften, so.
Well, so, let me just say, I wrote this up as the goals that I personally feel I will be working on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know that the rest of you haven't actually heard the initial informational presentation about green community, which I think is on one of our next couple of meetings. Uh, I think that's what Mark had said, so, um, it may be hard to actually jump on board with this goal without knowing more about it.
Right, what I was going to say was, um, and, and I'll, I'll have a comment on a few of these, is, um. You know, consider, and rather than saying achieve, you know, that the board should consider, uh, achieving. Green community designation by fall twenty nineteen, you know, meeting, so in other words, we're not gonna, I don't want, I, I, we can't have goals set policy. We have to be able to have an open debate and have voting on specific things we're gonna move forward as a policy, right? So that's, and that's where we kinda get off track if we keep, if we take our goals and make them too tactical, and, and I'm a hundred percent sa- uh, uh, open to the idea of. Discuss fully and make a decision on green community designation for a timetable of fall twenty nineteen town meeting. I think that's a, that's a, that's a, it keeps it open ended, lets us have our say, and then at the same time, um, lets the next select person. Or, you know, whoever may get elected next also have an opportunity to have a say, um, uh, because fall twenty nineteen would have an election between now and then, so, um.
Yeah, I think this, it's perhaps just, um, the, some rewording.
Yeah, these are a hundred percent awesome.
We would, you know, have the select board make a decision of whether or not to proceed.
Right, I mean, obviously the select board has to make a decision about whether or not to proceed in order for any goal about green communities to be there, and I, I recognize that.
But, you know, it's setting a deadline for that decision to get made, um.
Right, because.
That's right.
Because backing the process up, we have, we do have to decide that.
Yep.
In the next couple of months.
But I think it's worthwhile.
So the, yeah, so the way I would, go ahead, Allison, sorry.
No, I, I, that was it, yep.
The way I would, I would alter, you know, you're like going from the lower one to the top one, because they, they transpire in different orders, right? Is in order to know whether or not we wanna recommend approval of the stretch code of spring twenty nineteen, we have to make a decision by, uh, probably March, right?
I would say probably earlier than that, we- well, whenever, we've gotta get it on the warrant.
Yeah, it's gotta go on the warrant, I, I think we have to make a decision no later than the end of March, so, um.
Right.
So I would, you know, I could put in March's decision for the board, and then subsequently, you know, this, for the fall town meeting would be in August, or in, in a September decision, uh, that's tight.
Well, we need, we need to make it early enough that we can spend some time helping the community understand.
That's right, that's right, yes.
Offering some presentations, um, maybe making video.
My hope, like I said, my hope, expectation is that this board is gonna discuss this as early as potentially next week, but some, one of those three meetings in December. Discuss it enough to proceed with having a more in-depth informational session. Done by the, the state level people who run the program at a public meeting where other boards are also invited, so. That's, and I would hope that actually that meeting will happen in January sometime.
Um, yes, so if the, if town meeting does not approve the stretch code, we can't get green community designation, is that accurate?
That's not.
That's correct. Well, I mean, you, you have to approve the stretch code before you can become a green community.
Right.
Whether you can do both.
So the first step is accepting the stretch code.
Right, and if the town meeting doesn't, we don't, we can't become a green.
If we can't get past that, we're not gonna become a green.
Right, so, so that's why I say, you know, if we can, we can, I, I say you can't really do anything till the end of April or, you know, beginning of May. With this, with the achieved community designation or recommend to achieve.
Oh, let me, the, the timetable on getting the community designation, so, the process is that a town meeting has to accept the stretch code. I believe that there is then another town meeting vote required, and then you submit to the town, to the state by the end of October. And they make their, they have like a six week period of time when they.
They do two, two grant processing sessions a year, one in the fall and.
Yeah, but the, to, to get the initial designation, you, you get all your stuff in, I think by the end of October, they have a six week or two month time to decide. And then they issue, then they say who, who is now a green community, and they give you them the money in January, your first, um. And I, the thing I'm not totally clear about is, but I think that there is a second town meeting vote required. That allows you to advance your stuff to the state.
Okay, so how about this, decide to move forward on green community process by end March? Which would give, which would encompass both these, because no, clearly if we're gonna forward with the, the stretch code, we would be starting to advertise.
Right.
That we, that this is what's gonna happen as a result, John, that's not a lot of time, though, to advertise for a.
That's what I was gonna say, so maybe if words are, you know, not later, but if we can do it earlier, it'll be, it'll behoove us.
By the end of February, actually, yeah.
On doing community education about what a stretch code is.
Let's give ourselves another month, yeah, so let's give ourselves, so how about end of February?
Right.
I like that better.
Okay, all right.
Uh, so, the next one is, uh, related to this housing things, and was a goal that I had promoted last year. To support construction of mixed income and or affordable, and affordable. Uh, in this case written with a, as the Affordable Housing Trust, they talk about capital A affordable and small a affordable. Affordable housing according to various state designations has certain, um, hard limits. Uh, but affordable as in the lower end of current market rate is also something that is needed in Groton. And so, uh, to support construction of over fifty-five housing that is, uh, affordable. On town owned and or privately owned land, as I think Mark had mentioned, um, there is a developer in Groton. Who has also approached the Affordable Housing Trust about doing something, um, I, I believe.
What about?
There are details about that at this point, but there will be soon.
Yeah.
And I, and I guess from my standpoint, I would like the select board to be supportive of these projects.
Right, no, I, we got that, um.
How do we go about doing this? I mean, do we identify kind of preferred parcels, or do we have zoning overlay, I mean, how do we?
Let's come back to this.
Okay.
Cause I think this is, this is a bigger nut than, uh, what we, than what was there, and especially if we started a process today. Um, I think we need to flesh this out a little bit more.
We can go back to, uh, how it was worded.
Yeah.
How we worded it this year.
Did you feel it didn't have enough teeth last year, is that why you wanna change it?
Uh, you know what, I actually didn't look at how it was worded last year, I was just, um, I didn't think to look. So last year we wrote support efforts to create more housing that is smaller and less expensive for our seniors who wish to downsize and remain in Groton while on a fixed income. And we fleshed out some details about the process, uh, but I think it's a good, it is, uh, not clear. Because, uh, it's, there's very different approaches here, there's either, we have town owned land, we decide we want this to happen, and then there's questions, do we. Uh, issue an RFP to get a developer in, do we, how much ownership do we take of it at that point, or do we sell it? Sell the concept, sell the process, I don't, not sure.
I'm all.
And then there's also private developers who may do something, who may propose something that requires something from the town, who knows what, and it would come for us.
Yeah, all right, I got some thoughts on this, but I can't collect them in a cohesive pattern right now.
And there may be more known, um, you know, after, after Mark gets the information that we asked for back tonight, and also. What this other proposal, whether it's real, has legs, or we'll, we'll hear more about it.
Sure, um, all right, let's, uh, keep this one for discussion, but we'll have to flesh it out, uh. I think, I think perhaps a revision to last year's is, is necessary, because I don't think it has a lot of teeth. Um, we don't really know, like, the way I would have read last year's, if I were gonna make it more effective, would it be to, um, make a policy decision on. How we would like to see. You know, low income senior housing developed in the town of Groton, are we willing to partner, your public private partner with having town owned land and RFPing that out for someone to build on? And then, and then, you know, we're not, I don't, I'm never gonna say the word, we're gonna invest money in anything, um, I don't want anybody to come at me for that. Um, but, you know, do we allow land that's town owned to be used as this idea, and do we, you know, do we, do we help sponsor articles to make it so? And become a friendly, you know, uh, to, to an RFP? Um, so I think that may be more of the angle on that, but that's just an idea right now.
It would be helpful to, to start to, to kind of put some parameters around what we're looking for. You know, so we can talk about big A affordable and small A affordable, but let's put a number, you know, in there, an order of magnitude number. Um, you, you know, let's talk about, you know, how much affordable housing do we have currently? Is our goal to double that, is our, you know, kind of to get some really tangible things in there, I think.
All right, so let's work on fleshing that one out.
We also, uh, do have two different entities that are charged with this, we have the Affordable Housing Trust, and we also have the Housing Authority. Both of which have probably some of that data already, um, and from my brief, uh.
What do they, the Affordable Housing Trust and the.
Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Authority. And, to be honest, uh. Since in my efforts to learn more about this, I, mostly what I've learned is that it's way more complicated than meets the eye.
Uh, I think that's been part of the problem, is that it's such a big bucket to attack, and none of us have that expertise. And that's why I think we can, we can, we can focus it into, what can we actually do, we can have, we can make a decision of, we would like to move forward with the idea of a. Private public where we have the land, somebody else built on, or whatever that is from a policy point of view, we can as a board debate that and make those choices. And then promote that to the public, like, we're actively looking for this, and then form a committee to help us make that, just make our policy, how it can be vetted out. And then come back and say, sorry guys, you can't have that.
Right.
That's okay, but at least we've evaluated something from a policy point of view and asked somebody to help us make it happen, or.
I, I think we also need to be cognizant and, and a little cautious around what other boards and committees roles are. You know, I don't want us to do something that then the planning board is now, you know, has concerns about how our process has unfolded, you know, we really need to figure out. What even are the paths before us, before we.
Well, so that's, uh, why.
Yep.
Both of these say support.
Yep.
Which in my opinion is, we are helpful to other people who are doing this, I do have a little bit of expertise in this, so. You just said none of us have expertise.
I'm gonna rephrase that, apologize, and none of us are experts in this.
I'm not an expert, that's for sure.
All right.
Okay, the next one, uh, has to do with the capital planning committee, which.
So this is already on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and whether or not we're going to do this or not is, is, is a matter for debate, um, I think that'll be decided in December here.
Uh, could well be, then it wouldn't need to be a, a goal, and if it isn't decided in December, I would still be pushing personally for it to happen.
But if it's been decided, not decided, because it's been voted down, it won't become a goal, right?
Yeah.
So I just, that's why, so we'll, I would just table that until we're through December, then we'll come back to it if we need to, um, cause there's some obstacle to not getting it done.
Um, so I had kind of lumped in with this same piece, also the need to a- assess the need for and potentially move forward with building committees. Whether it's a standing building committee, whether it's a short term facilities condition or facilities use assessment. Um, to me, when I made my list of potential capital planning related concerns, a lot of them started to trickle into buildings and facilities.
Yeah, and that's where I think the most of our debate is ending up, and I'd rather not rehash that debate in this workshop, um.
I wasn't suggesting.
No, I know you're not, I'm just saying that, I'm trying to avoid that, because I know it's, there's a lot of. I'm gonna say word choice challenges in this situation, as well as perspectives on what we do and don't need, and what the town manager. And, and the, and the rest of our departments do and don't do, and what we'd like oversight on, um, so let's come back to that one, um. Uh, Becky, what is your, um, your framework for the, uh, I'm sorry, one, two, three, the fourth item?
Yeah, I should, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't remember, I should do that, that would make it easier, yeah.
No, no, don't worry about it. I, I numbered them, you got eight, we're number four of eight.
Number four. Uh, so, um. I'll read the goal, "Work in collaboration with the Friends of Prescott toward creating a reliable revenue stream for the town from the lease of the Prescott School." We have set something in motion, and, uh, I believe we all hope that it will be successful. Uh, I would like it to be a goal of ours that we work with them to make it successful. Success being a reliable revenue stream.
So my big concern, I agree that I would like to see them be successful, and I think that this is a big piece of that. My concern is potential need for sizable capital investment, and how we can work with the Friends of Prescott to kind of craft a, a path forward that works for everyone, that everyone can support.
So, um, I think the sizable capital investment is, there is potential in the future. Um, would, would it be helpful if we limited this to during the terms of the current lease? That's what I'm talking about.
What, what do you foresee us doing or being able to do to help them in that way?
Well, um, certain questions have come up since we awarded the lease that, uh, have needed some, like, there was, there were questions about capacity, questions from the fire marshal, questions about how to resolve some, uh, egress issues. I would like it as a goal that our stance is to help that process, not that it is we, you know, have put you in charge, sink or swim on your own. And, and it's, so it's a philosophical, uh, I just, what I'd like us to go on record is working with them towards success.
John?
Um, yes, I have a little different look at it, without, without any particular bias or, or precedent. Um, uh, the Friends of Prescott is a, uh, five oh one C three nonprofit organization, so they're a business unto themselves. And they've leased a piece of property from us. And they need to make a go of it without funding from the town.
This says nothing about funding. And I don't, I am not trying to, not trying to hide funding in here.
Let me finish, okay?
Yes, for sure.
I don't think the town has any business telling them how to run their business, okay? I don't think we have, it's not our role. They're a private, independent operation, and we've gone to extreme length with some snags, but to extreme length, um, to get them as clear information as we could about what you can do in there and what you can't do. And I'll agree, it took a little longer than to get there, but they went into this knowing what was possible. And they've decided to proceed, because they signed the lease. Now I think they need to go off and make it work.
I guess what I-
I don't know what role the town has in helping them make it work, I don't see it.
I could answer that question, I think that if problems arise, and they, there is uncertainty about, uh, how to get this problem solved.
What kind of a problem are we talking about, can you give us an example?
And why wouldn't it fall into the normal parameters of what we do?
I am aware of problems that have arisen, I, I guess I don't feel comfortable, um, being the person to share those.
Being what? Sorry, I just-
She's, she's-
I am aware of problems that have arisen, things that have changed after the lease was signed that caused, um, a, a fair amount of, uh, you know, a big change, I mean, for, it's, that I'd, I'd rather not go into at this point.
Gee, but, I mean, every week I meet with Mark, and I say, what, what's going on, do, we've got, meeting all our responsibilities, I, I've tracked with him on getting a set of doors for the gym fixed and sorted out, and, um, I, I'm not hearing any other things, so...
I'm hearing different things, so...
Well, if we don't know about them, we can't, we can't react to them, sorry, but, um...
So, I, I guess, I mean, I, I, I don't mean, I don't mean to be, you know, I don't think there's, uh, secret information here, it is a philosophical approach. I believe that we sh- in my opinion, it is in the interest of the town for us to be a cooperative partner with the Friends of Prescott, which I think is a little bit different from what you said, John, that they're a business unto themselves, and they took on, you know, they came into this with their eyes open. Um, they did come into this year assuming that they would be getting quite a bit of revenue from, uh, one tenant, which then, you know, soon, soon after the lease was signed, that became not possible, uh, and had not been foreseen.
And this tenant was the Groton Community School, who came up with a need, right? And it wasn't a need that was, um, it was a need that was brought to, um, the Friends of the Prescott by another party that said, if this is possible, we would like to do it.
Probably you and I, neither of us know the whole details, and whether we debate that is-
They came to me first, so I've been a process, part of the process for a fair amount of time, the people that were interested in doing it. And so we did everything to try and make that happen, and I was the most disappointed person in town when I learned that now that you had, that we had, had responded to the wishes of the Friends of Prescott to take out the educational part, and of what you can do in that building, and get the commercial part to work, that you can't go back. And I was very disappointed, but frankly, the, the, uh, the opportunity to have, have leased that to the, the, uh, community school, um, i- it just popped up out of nowheres.
Right, right.
So, it didn't work, well, that's very sad, but that's what business is all about.
Well, and, and I know too-
But that also impacted the, the amount that comes to the town, and so, should things like that happen in the future, I would hope that we would all be supportive of, you know, adding creative ideas, um, support to, let's help do what we can, I am not saying spend money, and it, it's, again, I, I wanna emphasize, it's a philosophy here. And if it's not, you know, it's not worth hours of arguing about, if-
So, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say this, the town and this board, and maybe it wasn't this iteration board, adopted a mission statement. And that mission statement very clearly says that we partner and provide service to all of our stakeholders, nonprofits, um, citizens, residents, businesses, et cetera. Um, I don't see that this is any different than, um, living up to that mission statement by supporting whoever comes to for us, in whatever way we can, to help them resolve their challenges. Um, I would not want to favor one of our nonprofit partners over another necessarily, and neither-
Do we have other nonprofit partners?
The, the Groton School is a nonprofit partner, Lawrence Academy is a nonprofit partner, and they, when I say partner, they are, these are people that are involved and invested in our community, whether or not they happen to actually be in a transactional leasehold situation with us is irrelevant, for example, Groton School gives us a pilot, that's kind of a transaction. We have a partnership with them therefore, so the, you know, the, 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 the new temple would like to, would like to help us out in certain ways, right? So there's, there are many of these relationships, whether they're defined by lease or not, they all need to be respected, and they all need to be treated with fairness. And should an issue arise to the board, the board has a duty and obligation to serve this town and its stakeholders, and those, those people are entities of the stakeholders.
I'm glad that you brought that up, because I was thinking today, as I was writing these, that I knew we had adopted a mission statement, and I didn't know where to go to find it, and I would really like to see it again, I'm glad to have you remind me of it, um, because uh, I think that's really important.
So if you type into Google Town of Groton, Town of Groton MA mission statement, it'll come right up in a Google search, it's right on our homepage.
And is it on the homepage?
Yep.
And is it accurate?
Uh, this is exactly as it was
Okay.
adopted.
Could you-
It's only been adopted once, and not been changed.
Could you read it again, just for the benefit?
Yes, so, the mission statement, "The Town of Groton strives to provide residents, businesses, and visitors with quality municipal services delivered in an effective, professional manner. Quality of life is enhanced through collaborative planning, personal dedication, and community involvement."
Okay, I like-
And, and in my opinion, our not-for-profits are both visitors and businesses, and often residents too, so...
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I, you, none of you need to be reminded, we have a financial stake in the success of this particular nonprofit, because it's a building that we own, and it could actually, as I said, generate a reliable revenue stream for us in the future, if things work out as the nonprofit hopes.
I, I think it's important, though, that's, I, I can re-interrupt again. I think it's important, though, to, to be realistic in the sense of ultimately, this entity and this project and this building has to have independent financial success. And if, if the town needs to kind of take extraordinary measures, if you will, um, in terms of waiving things or enforcing things, or, you know, working around things, um, to make them viable, then I guess I, I don't wanna be in a situation where we are, are kind of kicking a final outcome down, down the road. I don't wanna kind of, um, you know, prop this up with either financial infusions or out of the ordinary, um, supports, if that only prolongs us knowing whether there's ultimately a viable operation here.
I, I think that, uh, maybe we've beat this one a little bit harder than we need to, and perhaps we should move on in the interest of accomplishing our task tonight, so... Because I don't think we're gonna agree on what it is.
I absolutely do agree that, uh, I, and we should not be in the position of propping up, uh, an organization. It does have to succeed, uh, on the merits of, of the proposal, so...
Alright, um, I really, really like number five.
Sorry, you did or didn't?
I really, really, really like it, yes.
Oh, good, glad to hear.
Um, I don't know what's entailed in revising Groton's precinct map, if, and, and I think we need input from town clerk, but perhaps we should, uh, yes, I think this is a very excellent goal, and-
For the benefit of those who would be watching us at home?
Yeah, let's read it, yeah, sorry, hopefully.
This, uh, goal is to work with the town clerk to evaluate and choose three polling places, and to revise Groton's precinct map if necessary.
I would, instead of saying three polling places, I would say polling places for our three precincts, because they could be the same, if one could be one and two, you know, and three, but I would,
Right.
rather than, rather than restricting it, but I definitely think that this is something we discussed, ha- having a project to, and this has been in the public's mind, uh, for a while. So that's, um, I think this is a wonderful goal, and it really does go to the heart of our citizenry and their, their voice in democracy, right?
Right, and we- Right, and it was brought to our attention that
Yeah.
the country club has some, hmm, particular, uh, obstacles that, uh, maybe we should look at different precinct voting places.
Sure. Um, again, uh, the next one, I'm sorry, Becky, please, go ahead.
Yeah, so, th- this one is something that I have been working on involving the nonprofit council, and the nonprofit council has no official sort of, what do I wanna say? Standing, um, but I think that the, it is, it has the potential for being a very worthwhile, uh, effort. So, the, my goal was to support the nonprofit council toward becoming an independently functioning group for networking and resource sharing. And, again, I was looking at what am I focusing on as a select board member? And I will be focusing on this, whether or not this is a goal of the entire select board, so, and it-
Do we know, or certainly I don't know what their interest or commitment is to that, and I don't know what stands in their way. So I certainly conceptually support that, but I don't really know what I'm-
Right, so, uh, the nonprofit council had a, was begun, uh, when Jack Petropolis was on the board, and he was the person who was kind of involved with it. Uh, and there was a question when he went off the board as to whether it was going to continue or not. Uh, I and Heather O'Reilly, who had volunteered to work with me, decided to put some effort into trying to get a group together to see if there was merit in continuing, and, and lo and behold, we had, uh, twenty-five people turn out who were very enthusiastic and grateful for the opportunity to be together, and, um, we will meet again in February. As far as it being, um, so I think that the, the usefulness of this would be to set something in motion that can continue, um...
So, yeah, I, I kind of, I have a, I think it works right now, because the select people, select members get involved, and because we're kind of helping to sponsor the dialogue of all our uh, nonprofit partners, and I'd be, unlike the, the, the Groton, she's, Groton Business Association, what is it now?
Board of Trade.
Board of, Groton Board of Trade, or now the G, yeah, um, it was a GB, it was a GBOT, now it's the Groton Business Association, right? Um, I don't know that we have much insight or influence in that, and it's an independent organization, and I, I'd hate to lose the, the, the reality of the impact we have with our nonprofit partners, because they're a little bit different. Um, and I think that either we assign liaisons to the GBA, and we attend, just like we are to the nonprofit, or we, or we continue the way we are with the nonprofit, so we don't lose access and insight into the, uh, into the, the nonprofit community. So I'm of two minds of this, because I'd hate to just divorce it from us, and then find that we no longer participate.
I, I think the, so a couple of comments just on that, one is that the Groton Business Association has a link through and a commitment and works with the Economic Development Committee. So there's a little, you know, that, that, that committee currently doesn't have any interaction with the nonprofit, um, groups. Now, what I don't know is whether it makes sense to, so the Economic Development Committee is kind of working around what our, what our future looks like and what our plans are. And part of the discussion has centered around, um, kind of how much realistic ability we as an entity, the EDC, have to develop economic anything in Groton. Um, so, we've kind of shifted some of our focus to quality of life, services, um, you know, maintaining a vital business community, but trying to divide that from, you know, businesses as a tax revenue source, or something along those lines. So I don't know whether there's a comfortable way to kind of make the nonprofit council more parallel with the GBA, potentially working with economic development, which may or may not have a different name ultimately, um, but that's my two cents.
How about continue to foster a relationship with the nonprofit council?
Sounds good.
Um, and let's see where that takes us.
Mm-hmm. No, I'm fine with that. No, I'm fine with that. Uh, so, anything else?
Yeah, I, I mean, wow, I mean, that was easy. I'm just trying to, okay, sure, let's go on to number, um,
Seven.
Number seven.
Decide and implement an appropriate and affordable level of fire slash EMS services based on the recommendations of the Fire Department Study Committee and the recommendations of the Fire Chief.
So if you were to change, implement to recommend, um, I'd be a hundred percent in favor of this. Because we can't implement something unless town meeting, um, allows us to. So I would be in favor of saying, decide upon and recommend to town meeting appropriate affordable level, you know.
Oh, that's fine.
Right, because it's not up to us at the end of the day to fund.
Yeah, right.
We, we, we may wish they would fund it, but we can't make it happen.
Um, so I had a, a similar one. I had expanded it a little bit to include all public safety. Kind of recognizing and looking at the number of goals that the new police chief has and and feeling that it was, that we wanted to kind of support developments and preparations to maintain public safety. In general, so whether that's an understanding of the fire department EMS needs that are kind of currently under review or whether that's something to do with the police department down the line. I would love to see us, whether we include it in a, a goal or just keep it in our mind, um, specifically kind of aging and, and child residents, um, and their needs in public safety and then mental health.
So these are synergistic, so I could see that yours being the top level goal and this first one being the first benchmark to achieve in that goal. Because I don't think we can achieve the others, this is already underway, we actually will need to do this and it, it should be part of our benchmark. So I think yours might be the goal from a evaluate public safety as a whole kind of situation. And then the first task on that goal or the first benchmark to get through is the fire EMS.
So, uh, I briefly thought about whether I should include police in this and then I didn't because I feel like the, I would rather wait to hear from, um, our new chief before assuming that we need to look at this. And I see that in his goals, he is talking about, uh, potentially adding a, a traffic person. Um, but, but I'm not sure that's exactly what he meant, the way it was written, so I kind of, and I, I know I had asked at one point about bringing him in, uh, to sort of check in on how things were going and we decided to put that off because it would happen as part of the budgeting, is that?
That generally someone, yeah, they're gonna come in anyway and we want to let budgeting happen.
Right, so that's why I left police out of this because I know we are already partway down the line on this one and therefore it's presumably something we're gonna be focusing on.
Um, I just, by the way, the way I read, if I read Michael Lewis multiple ones, is that he is looking to try to find a grant to fund that position for traffic.
Ah, okay, good.
So that's why it's kind of in there.
Right.
It's honestly, he's looking for a new position unless.
Even better.
Yeah, with grants for, for, so that's kind of how I fitted all those together in his, um, goals. But I could be wrong and we can ask clarifying. Uh, Allison, are we, have we, have we adopted kind of a mixture of your guys' two?
I'm fine with it. I don't know whether kind of what I have up there is sort of the right flavor.
Oh, the second, the second benchmark would be work with police chief.
Something along those lines.
Right, um, I mean,
Yeah.
We, yeah, I mean, and perhaps launch a committee to invest, you know, to this, to some advisory committee, I don't, we, I feel, I would feel, I would feel that we had done a disservice if we made, if we did this fire department one with a committee and then didn't do it with a committee for the police one.
Well, we had the police one scheduled at, at one point and then with the change of the chief, I think we decided that, you know, let the police review, um, go a year.
Right.
Um, so the chief can get into the nooks and crannies and understand really what he's got there. Um, and, and I think we should proceed with that. Um, so I like your idea of, we have this general goal of reviewing all our public safety services and the fire department is the one we're doing right now and, and maybe next year the goal will be for the police department or however, you know, we want to space it out.
Yeah, we could, we could do it second half of twenty eighteen calendar year.
Right, you know, we should look at emergency management, how, you know, where that's at for instance and so forth.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So that we go through all the aspects of public safety over time.
Okay, right, that'd be a, a great start and this, this could then be, you know, yeah.
Sounds good to me.
Oh, was it emergency response?
Yeah, that's, yeah, part of our other.
You'll see if my typing gets worse and worse as it gets later.
It's all good. Um, you're doing a, a great service, thank you.
No, that's, that's emergency management.
Yeah, emergency management plans, but I think that's already, we can evaluate that. I think that's done as part of their yearly review.
I don't know.
But, um, we can, we can certainly talk about that. Um, and ask them off that comes off.
We have a big committee for that.
Yes.
And I don't know when it meets or what it does, um.
Okay, so my last, uh, recommendation was, has to do with parking. Create a committee or a working group to assess the need for increased parking spaces in the town center and recommend ways to create them if necessary.
Yeah, why not? I mean, I don't know, I, I'm okay with this, creating a committee to go talk about, to go figure this out. It'd be nice to have an answer to that.
Well, it has become.
I know we have businesses that are asking us to find more parking down here.
Right, and I know that, um, yeah.
I think we need to understand what the planning board plans to do. If they're gonna go off and put a committee in place to, to look at that.
Are they?
I don't know, we should find out.
I have not ever heard that, if they were, that'd be.
Well, they look at it every time somebody wants to build something new. They have to.
Right.
To figure out how much parking space the new property has to provide for itself.
Best case, we partner with them, worst case, we're on the right.
But I think the overall, yes, there's not one particular, I mean, the Groton Inn came in, they got approval. Parking is obviously tight there. I understand a lot of the, uh, town parking behind Prescott is used, um, by the inn.
Um, I'm just gonna say, I think it, it, it's important as part of this to develop or have someone develop some sort of expectation for parking. Um, you know, I, I drive through the center, it feels like sometimes dozens of times a day. Um, and there are certainly times that you, I couldn't park right in front of the specific business I'm visiting, but it's almost never a problem to park within fifty feet.
Right.
So there's kind of a question in my mind of, you know, what, what really constitutes a parking need? And, you know, if we were to quadruple the size of parking behind Prescott, does that solve the problem? Or do people just say, but I'm not parking there?
Cause I only want to park on the street.
Right, so, you know, kind of understanding, I, I personally don't, I'm not confronted on a daily basis with an inability to park in the center of town.
Right, I, I.
But I hear a lot about it.
And I, I would say, then I could say the exact same thing. Um, I think part of this has to, to do with us being a little bit forward-thinking and planning. People have talked a lot about the impact of Indian Hill when it opens and the impact of the inn and the restaurant when they are fully functioning and the new restaurant right over there. Um, and maybe we have enough parking for all of those things, but if in fact we really want, uh, a thriving revenue stream in the Prescott School, then maybe that's when the crunch is going to hit. Or if, uh, the bank that is about to close, so I've heard, if that property gets taken over by something else that somehow needs a lot more parking than is available. So I guess I, I want us to be a little bit more, um, and it's tempting to say, yeah, there's always plenty of parking and think about, you know, it's way better than if you're in Boston where you might have to park blocks away. That's true. On the other hand, the expectation of being able to park nearby is part of why people live in Groton.
Right.
In a small town or not in Boston.
I, I think, I think as part, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I think it would be great to understand what, what the metric is that would trigger kind of the next phase of parking development or whatever.
Yeah.
Wasn't there a question about parking on the economic development questionnaire?
There may have been, I can look into that. We're having a little trouble getting the, we have the questionnaire results. Um, we're having attendance issues.
Uh-huh.
Kind of off to the side.
I'm trying to get a quorum.
We have a quorum. We don't have the person with the answers coming to the meetings.
With the actual information.
Okay, um, so I'm, I'll be honest on this one. I'm a little concerned about Monday nights when our sister restaurant here opens.
Right.
And, you know, we've got a lot of meetings to take place, more select meetings, it can be, more select meetings, select board meetings, I apologize everybody. The select board meetings can be nobody here or it can be a lot of people here depending on the issue. And I'm really concerned about impacting, you know, the, the, they've been kind enough to donate that, that parking to us while we've been here, but as soon as they become a viable restaurant, I'd hate to take up their spots for paying customers, right? Um, and, and maybe we just need to address that, you know, and if there's any time issues, maybe we just park at the, you know, maybe we get authorization, hey, can, can, can we park at the bank and, or, you know, wherever it is after hours? Or we use the, we use the geld lot or something like that, right?
I don't know, I mean, I know when, you know, when I get here for our meetings, I get frustrated if I have to park in front of the neighbor's house on the other side of his driveway.
Right.
Which, you know, is thirty-two feet that way.
Right, right, so I mean, I think there's, that's, I think that's the whole idea of the expectations of, right, um.
But also isn't, that is the bank that is maybe gonna?
Bank of America is the one that's gonna shut, that has decided they were gonna shut their doors and it's up for sale at least.
So somebody else could come in and.
Yeah.
Well, we really don't know.
We don't.
If I walked over and talked to the people there, not high people up and said, you're gonna leave an ATM machine here for people? And they pointed at the part of the building that's set up to have the drive-through over there. So I, I don't think anybody knows what they really plan to do to that property.
We'll know when it happens, right?
Right.
All right, so I think parking's an issue. I think maybe we at least need to be aware and discuss parking and, and maybe even formulate a committee to help us understand those realities of, you're right, what's reasonable, you know, a hundred feet, two hundred feet, do we really have a problem?
Right.
Or is, are we just trying to account for the, the surge condition that happens once a year or twice a year? In which case, that's not worth, you know, we need to evaluate that as a policy level, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or is, or are we gonna have issues once, as we say, Indian Hill opens up and suddenly we have no parking every weekend for ten weekends?
Right.
All right, so that, um, thank you Becky, that was a, a great, and you got some items here that appear to be more.
This is more sort of our, our functioning, um, and.
How about we schedule another workshop to tackle those?
Well, just can I read through them, um, including the long-term meeting schedule that has, uh, agenda items? Not that they're cast in stone, but so we know what's coming up. I think we should do that as a regular thing.
I had that in there as a, um, an idea to go into the new member kind of idea. Um, I know on the school committee we had a, it was at a very high level, but there was an annual agenda so that you knew kind of, you know, the first meeting in February was budget, the second meeting, you know, just a flavor. So that when I have a question about something, I can look at it and be like, oh yeah, March is dedicated to, you know, whatever the heck.
I think that in general sessions like this where we get to actually delve into some things without quite so much the time pressure, we should do more often because, um, there are, there are things that deserve our attention and take a long time and maybe we would actually get to someplace and not have to keep coming back and having little bits of that discussion over and over. So I suggested three or four times a year or periodically, once a month, twice a month, setting aside an hour of the meeting for our workshop discussion. I don't know, I'm open to possibilities. Um, I know we have had a practice of meeting with all town committees on a rotating schedule, although it seems to me it's been a while since we've seen a committee, so I just wanted to remind us about that. And, um, this came up a long time ago when we were choosing members for something, but I, I would like us to get informed about, there are different methods of voting um, and just have that, that information available to us because we may choose different methods on different occasions for different purposes.
Voting for our board?
For our, our five-member board to, uh, if we are staffing a committee and we have, you know, five seats available on a committee and we have nine people who've applied.
Okay.
How do we go, and there are different ways of doing that.
Okay, but this is for the select, this isn't like remote voting at town meeting versus.
It's just for our, no, this is just our committee. However, remote voting at town meeting looked like it was something that was on our IT manager's list of goals and I wondered about that because I was on a committee that already, that already debated that once and decided against it.
Well, it's not legal.
It, uh, right, no, I, I think he was looking at in the, in.
Yeah, there was something in there.
In town hall, in the town meeting voting and I.
Yeah.
That's different, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Sorry, when I hear remote, I hear.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I said it wrong.
No, it was like digital or something.
Digital voting, right.
Not typing, but digitally.
It was, uh, you're right, it was the committee.
Clickers.
You know, decided that it was a very, um, expensive thing and you have to account for a high point, yeah, it's all kinds of.
Right.
Um.
I was on that committee, so.
Yeah, um.
So that's it.
I will, I, I, I'll say this, um, I get different feedback. I'm okay with having meetings till ten, eleven o'clock at night. But I get feedback that not, people don't want to be here till ten, eleven o'clock at night, so I constrain the meeting to not have meetings where we're here till ten, eleven o'clock at night. Um, and yet then I say, hey, we're not doing enough or we're not getting enough accomplished. And I, I admit I'm in a challenge to reconcile those two ideas, so if people want to get stuff done, I'll schedule the bejesus out of agendas and we'll, I, I, I don't care. I can stay up late. But I know that our, I know that our ability to focus and our ability to get things done and then the consideration we have for our, um,
Yeah.
our EV people as well as our town manager and, and, and town minister and assistant, uh, just, it, it becomes, it become other issues, right, so. I enjoy the input because it, it, it's, it's, I'm glad somebody else is thinking about this and recognizing the challenges. Um, I think that there are a lot of bigger picture items that take a lot more than we think they're gonna take.
Right.
Yes.
And nobody, and we're all caught off guard, like, oh my God, this is, this took two hours and we did one thing on the agenda.
I think a lot of, to me, anyway, a lot of it could be, a lot of our discussions could be handled much more effectively in the workshop type setting. Um, and again, harkening back to kind of, when I'm more familiar with the school committee, when we had workshops, they were, they were open and posted, but they were not recorded. Um, you know, I don't know whether we have an alternative to just kind of set up a camera that just kind of old-school records. Um, you know, I think that those things are important. For me personally, I can handle a fairly long agenda. It's when I'm surprised at how long stuff takes, that's when I start to lose my mind. Um.
Well, that's, that's.
I mean, the other, the other piece I would say is, to me, workshops, you know, I, I participated in them occasionally, like on a Saturday morning. Sometimes that's more effective. I also don't know how the committee as a whole feels about start times at this point. Um, you know, we've had a lot of turnover on the committee as a whole and maybe that we could start earlier every other week. It may not be, I don't know, I don't. I'm happy to start the meetings at two, but that's just me.
Yeah, I'm, I also don't, I don't mind going till nine-thirty. I think that's fine. I, I, when, I will say that when I was on the school committee for all those years, we almost always went till ten or eleven.
Oh, yeah.
But I don't recommend that.
There were some that lasted until tomorrow.
Or until tomorrow, yes, indeed. By candlelight one night.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how effective that, that is as a committee.
No, I'm not recommending it, um, but I think, uh, nine o'clock is, you know, is great if we can get it. Nine-thirty is okay. Um, I'm also have, have generally pushed for a seven o'clock start time, but I could do six-thirty. Most of the time.
One of the benefits for some of us, and I'll speak for myself, of a seven o'clock start time, even though I work from home, is that it gives me time to unwind and depressurize and handle a few things before I come here and it puts me in a much better. And it puts me in a much better state of mind to have a seven o'clock start time. I've noticed a big difference in my ability to be effective and run the meeting well when I start at seven, because I've had that twenty-five, thirty minutes of downtime at home after I end my workday at home, right, to eat and not have to rush to eat and just, just so... I, I much prefer a seven to ten schedule for our meetings than a six to nine schedule, because I actually feel like I don't do as much in a six to nine schedule. But I know that that's, that's, and that's the problem we're gonna have, is we're all gonna have these different ideas and schedules and how things work or don't work. And I know that, you know, when we get another member of the board comes in who has a workday schedule and they can't get to Groton till six, we're gonna be at seven again, right? It just seems like over history, seven o'clock has always kind of ended up being with an occasional six-thirty thrown in there as a, hey, do you mind doing it once a while? Do I mind doing a six-thirty once a month? Of course not, right?
Right, and that's, you know, to me, it might be, so once a month, maybe we have a workshop at six and we bring in pizza. I mean, you know, like, who knows? There's...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, certainly we could do something like that if we take the, I mean, some of us also like to have our family time and, and, and not be away from my kids during dinner.
So, anyway, there's a lot of ideas. I think what you're hearing is that probably all of us can be flexible on occasion. And that we all, it's, it's a dilemma that's not gonna go away, no matter what, what we decide to do about extending our meetings. Because talk will fill the time available.
Well...
But, but we can work on it.
I think, um, having, knowing dates and times, the things that are gonna happen into the future is helpful. Cause then I can plan around it.
Right.
If I know it's gonna happen six weeks from now, it goes into my calendar. And then when the next party comes in that wants something, I say, well, I've already got this.
Right.
So let's, let's find, you know, you, some other window that I can spend time with you. But the things that kill me is, uh, you know, you find out three days before the meeting that, oh, we're gonna start at six instead of seven.
Right.
That kind of stuff.
Right.
Right.
And I think we saw that unfold a little bit last week around tonight's meeting.
Accurate. Um, I think that it may not be a bad idea to set one of our meetings, you know, in the beginning of the month, we say, this meeting's gonna be at six. You know, does that work for everybody? And if it does, that gives me opportunity to plug my calendar where I stop work at four-thirty instead of five. And I just don't schedule the meetings at four-thirty.
I think it would be better to do, schedule something like that, and then if we don't have the need for it, we can cancel it, but...
Or we just get out of here early, get out of here eight instead of nine. It's okay too.
I personally find six very early.
No, I, I understand. Whatever the time is, you know, I'm just saying, as an idea, if it's calendarized, um, you know...
And that's something, again, harking back to school committee. We got to a point on the school committee where we all had a shared school committee calendar. So that things like last week's discussion of are we meeting next week, like we all had that calendar invitation kind of fed to us. So it may be something to think about. It may not be. I don't know.
Yeah, um...
That's not our goal.
I, I advocated for us having a, a calendar that we would get appointment invites to, but the challenge is if you're getting an appointment from your Outlook and you use a Google phone, it doesn't always come through on your Google Gmail account, right? So there's a, there's some tweaks and challenges to, to that situation.
Right.
So where...
And that may make it not worth it, but...
Yeah, um, but you're absolutely right.
Um, so I had a couple, a couple items. Um, the new member education thing, I think we've touched on that. I think that, um, kind of like, like some of Becky's goals. I think that the community compact agreement that we have as, you know, that we've signed on to as a community, i- is kind of something we're leaving on the table needlessly, exactly. John sent, John, I have some of his prioritization. Obviously, I have mine. I'm happy to collect those for future discussion. I would love to see us, you know, just have a kind of a standing goal of, of participation on an annual basis in one best management area for review.
Well, become a green community is one.
Right, and the, the only reason I didn't have that on here was that I thought that was kind of already unfolding.
Right.
But...
But yeah, um, I also, I need to look again at that community compact. I failed to do that. I apologize.
I think, so I had on here the idea of improving communications between the select board, the town manager, and the public in advance of board and voter decisions. And this, I think, Mark and I have talked a, a lot about this. I'm a very visual person. So if he, when he gives me information orally, it, 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 there's, there's almost no point in that. And I don't know... I don't know whether other people feel that there's something that could be done more effectively there. I feel like we spend a lot of time as a board kind of responding to, oh, you guys made that decision last week? We didn't even know about that. But...
I, um, I don't know if this is related. But I, I, I do think that sometimes, uh, Mark floats an idea. And if, if no one responds, then he interprets that as permission to go the next ten steps down the road.
Right.
And, um, I know that I am not always that quick to react. So, uh, I, I actually have had some conversation with him and so, you know, it would help me if you said, is it our right for me to proceed? Is this what you want? Should I, should we proceed with this? Um, it would be helpful for me.
Yeah, um, without putting words in Mark's mouth, I know that there's some issues that really are truly day-to-day.
Absolutely.
A orientation. He's, he's, A, a lot of times he's trying to inform us of them and also check himself, like, hey, these are my day-to-day purviews. Do you guys have any insights to give me, you know, cause, cause we're his only sounding board on certain things of to say, you know, can you guys see any flaws in this procedure? It's a day-to-day activity, but, you know, should I proceed? Can you see obstacles? And, and, uh, there is no necessarily, uh, rea- there is no need, in fact, it's almost a, um, it's almost more of a, it's almost a violation of the charter if we intrude and say, you know, you can't do that. More than to say, hey, this, there might be a better way to go about this, or let's advise you on what to do.
I think though, to interrupt for a moment, that that, that using us as a sounding board makes a lot of sense. It made a lot of sense when it was a very experienced board. The, the difficulty that I find is that he kind of does that. And I don't understand all of the pieces that are implied in what he's throwing out there. So I think that was part of what was kind of witnessed last week, and as I had my meltdown. Was that, you know, he was saying X, Y, Z, and I didn't interpret that to include the whole rest of the alphabet. Which ultimately I should have and would have had I been more experienced, but I don't know how we kind of, you know, he and I talked and he agreed to, to help me recognize sooner what I know I don't know, you know, like...
Yeah, I mean, we could talk all day long and we shouldn't be discussing Mark in public without his presence. But, um, I, I think there's a tendency when you get used to having a very, a very skilled board with a lot of years.
Yeah, absolutely.
Then you get used to that type of interaction, and it's challenging to deviate from that. Uh, especially when you still have, uh, one member, you know, Josh, Joshua, Josh, excuse me, Mr. Deegan, who, who still has the, the tenure, and then, you know, I've been around, worked with him since the FinCon days. I'm a board for a lot of years, so it's, it's a little different. Um, and then the rest of everybody has a few years, or one or two compared. Right, so it creates this, this, this challenge. I don't know, um, Alison, I understand this goal. Other than the continued and constant individual one-on-one mentoring and guidance and conversations to, to evolve this.
Right.
And my worry is that you start to err on the side of public meeting challenges and/or open meeting, open meeting law challenges.
Right, and my, my big concern with this is that we as board members can't serve the public effectively if, if there's not strong communication that's truly effective from the town manager to the board and to the public.
Right.
Um, and that's kind of the piece that, I don't know what the answer is, and I'm, I'm, I'm not in any way implying that it's the responsibility of the town manager. But I can't be helpful and answer people's questions when they're asking me things and I'm like, I don't really know what that process is.
And I, I would, I have a slightly maybe different take, but, um, we are the elected, more charged with overseeing, uh, the management of this town. And we have a very, very capable town manager who, um, you know, if, in, in a vacuum, could certainly run the town. But I, we're not asking him to do that, and I think that the town deserves to, to have the partnership of our board and the town manager working together. Uh, and sometimes that means, you know, we're kind of generating the ideas in the direction and sometimes he's generating the ideas in the direction, but either way, we're sharing and we're working together on that. It isn't that, um, you know, we come in here to be informed about what has happened over the, in, in, since our last meeting, that has moved the town forward on certain F, uh, things that we didn't even know were happening.
So the last...
So, uh, going back to this Alison, I, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna let this, I think this is incumbent on each board member to, to have that conversation. And when things come up that they don't, they're not, that they, they, they caught off guard to, to have that conversation and understand, analyze that. And then if they, if, if a board member sees a pattern or they see a, a static thing and, and we can bring it up in a public meeting, and if other board members think that, that, that they also experiencing that, that's different, right? I, I think that some of these are individual style and flavor issues, and we just have to get them through transparency and communication, learned and discussed. I don't know why, and I don't think it's, I don't know why I don't appear to have any of these issues when I feel like I should. I feel like I'm missing something. Like I should have a lot more issues than I do.
I think you're, you're the chair and you probably get much more communication.
I'll, I'll be honest with you. I talk less to Mark than most of you do.
Well, I don't know. I know that actually.
Exactly. Um, and I think, you know, you've got twice as much experience, three times as much as, I mean...
Okay, I, that's fine. And if, and if that's what it is, then, then I, I think it's very difficult for...
I don't think the town is served well when the direction, and I'm not...
Yeah.
Um, when the direction is for select board members to figure out how to better the communication. I think that we as, as a board and the public don't nee- need, deserve better communication.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying it's up to the board member to decide. There's a challenge of communication and ask for help to resolve it.
I think that's what we're doing.
So I'm saying that, and if the majority of the board feels that that is indeed a problem, that we could work on collectively, great. If people are looking at me like I've got seven heads and I'm the only one, then clearly, yeah, it's my thing to work out with whoever I want.
I, I don't think that Alison is the only one, and I, I think that the town, um, deserves to see decision-making happening here rather than five different conversations in private with the town manager. Uh, and then we have a very, you know, sort of brief discussion here in public. Admittedly, it's a challenge in the time constraints and under the open meeting law. And sometimes we have to have information given to us ahead of time so we know what we're talking about. I think that's part of what we're asking for, is to not get surprised in a meeting. But I think we're also asking for, um, participation from the board as well as from the town manager in decision-making.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, this is a, this is gonna be a moving target forever as new members will on and off, as things change. I, I concur that, you know, the public deserves informed, select board members. I guess I've always taken it as my responsibility to make sure I was informed, and if I didn't feel like I had the information from Mark, I went out and found it. If I saw something on the agenda, which I get on Wednesday, and I wasn't the chair, I would go out and try to figure it out until I was satisfied that I had what I needed and I was waiting for the debate to maybe influence or inform my decision. So, um, I, I...
Can we, can we have this as a discussion point at some point when the town manager is here?
Yeah, I think maybe it's better to put on as a, as an agenda item rather than as a goal, because I think this is a bigger issue that we should hash out and recognize.
I'm, I'm not willing at this point to give it up as a goal.
I know, uh, it's fine.
I think we need some discussion with him.
Communication's a goal, but without defining it, what that means, it's a, it's a, it's a toothless goal, right? If it means that...
Right, but we can't define it without Mark here.
Mark has to learn, you know, Becky and Alison's style, or the first, you know, when new board members have ever been on comes, that there's a, there should be, there needs to be a period of adjustment, we have to evaluate parameters, or we need to set policies in stone. I mean, I just don't know what goal to put.
Agreed, but to me, the, to me, the goal is present, present alternatives with pros and cons and the discussion of the...
I think that was me.
The ideas that led to, here's what we're doing, or here's what I'm recommending, and that's the piece that I feel like I'm missing.
I got you. So maybe the, the, you want a voter packet that says A, B, C. Here's, here's if you vote one way, here's if you vote the other way.
I wanna know, I wanna know, you know, so here's the capital plan. What, what other projects were considered? How did this end up in twenty-twenty as opposed to twenty-twenty-four? What was a little bit of that background? Right now, I think that the, the public perception is that the town manager does tremendous work, comes forward and says, I think this is the best path forward, and we're left to say yes or no. But there's not much discussion of how we got to this recommendation.
So at a leadership level, I would argue that that's exactly what's supposed to happen, is that leaders at the tops are not supposed to be...
But we're at the top, not them.
Hold on, hold on, let me, let me finish, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing that you're wrong. I'm saying this is the perspective, right? Is that someone at, at a board level expects the, the individual responsible for the line, the, the, the bit, line of business to come up with a recommendation, and then it's the, the board's member's job to ask, you know, what were the alternatives considered or not? And if, in, in the absence, unless there's a report that we ask for every single time, where we say, it's gonna take thirty minutes of presentation every time we have a meeting with China.
I, I don't think that's realistic, and I don't think that's what we're asking for. I know that, you know, professionally, if I'm asked to look into something, there's always a two-paragraph email to my boss that says, I've reviewed the following six alternatives. Here's the one that I feel is the best one to move forward with. Here's one concern I have with it. Here is why I eliminated those other four. I mean, there's some information presented to the decision-maker, in part because I want him to, to support the decision I'm recommending. I don't say, you know, oh, we should always do it this way, and then not tell anyone why and say, I want you all to go out independently and discover why I'm right.
So the, the way I telegraph that, if I need that from somebody who's, who I'm supporting, or they're supporting me, whatever, is I always ask it. Like, where's this information? How come I don't have it? I can't make a decision without it. And eventually they, they, they figure it out, that I need, that I, that they're not gonna get any further problems.
Conversation I feel like I've had several times, and now I think it's risen to the level of being a board goal.
And I would agree that the charter lets us, uh, setting the policy and overseeing, um, the town manager to implement.
Be careful with that.
Understood. So we need to continue this discussion with Mark here at some point. The, the last one that I had on there is, is both very an item that I would request coming out of last week that goes onto an agenda at some point, cause I was a little surprised. But I think we need to continue to understand the long-term expenses, timing, and necessary revenue resources to support both the Town of Groton and the Regional School District. And I know last week, y- y- you had a, a comment about my ongoing concern with the school district. And suggested that perhaps we should talk about that at some point in the bigger picture, which I think is certainly, if some, if others feel it's warranted, it, it certainly makes sense to do so.
Yeah, my reason for wanting to put that on, on an agenda is because I don't think that's Mark's job. I think that's our job as a board.
Great.
I, I mean, so that's kind of what I say. I think we look to Mark to make, to have to do that all the time. And he's the town manager of Groton, not the, not the business manager of the school district.
Right, but when we have, so to me, a good example of this is the Town of Groton has a cap... Right, but when we have, so, to me, a good example of this is the Town of Groton has a capital plan, and the Regional School District has a capital plan. I see repeated and, you know, strong evidence that Mark is very aware of the Town of Groton capital plan and that he accounts for it, and that that impacts his budget planning, his operations planning, both in the current budgeting and in, in thirty-year decisions. I don't see evidence that the school district capital plan is treated in the same way.
And unless we, unless the board sets a policy that, of certain things that will be, it won't be.
Absolutely.
Because that's the town manager's job as town manager of Groton, not the town manager of the school district. And that's just, that's just the reality. He has a responsibility for the district.
I disagree, but, I mean, half our budget is the school district, so.
And which gets assessed. It's not that we have any authority or ownership over it. It gets assessed to us, and we have to deal with it.
We should have a discussion.
Yeah, I think we're getting a little off track here.
Well, I just, I mean.
I mean, not.
Not that I don't wanna deal with it, not that I've never been a fan.
It's all important, but I, I'm not sure, we're straying further and further away from
That's why I asked about this.
Just getting goals down on paper here.
I asked about this workshop that the school district, the school committee is having, because I thought earlier that that was going to be more budget-focused and looking at, and involving us, but.
That's not the intent of the forum now. I know that Marlena has sent out emails that we've all gotten.
Yeah, no, I, I saw them, yeah.
Kind of saying, hey, if, if there's interest or if there are topics we need to discuss, we should have a meeting. And to my knowledge, I mean, I, I didn't respond with anything. I don't know.
So where do we, right, stand at this point as, as far as our process?
Well, we have one, one member who wasn't able to be present.
Right.
I think, um, I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so, okay, here's what I've got, and Alison, maybe check me on this.
Yeah, I will.
So I've got the, all select board policies is something we would like to put on there. Review all select board policies, right?
Yep.
Um, and I've got review all the non-elected boards and committees as something we'd like to have as a goal. We, we would have a discussion with IT before we just, before we decide whether or not we want the goal of, uh, let me rephrase that. I think what we came to, if I'm categorizing correctly, is that we are all interested in the goal of elim- eliminating duplicate entry, but we're not sure how to proceed, what the best process is. So we need to have a discussion with IT before we can make that a goal. Is that a, is that an accurate summation of our discussion, John? Alison?
I don't, I don't really.
Okay.
I, I think that.
Do we need to do any more tonight?
Right, I mean, I think that this needs to be, I need to go through and clarify my own cryptic notes and put the original. If you guys can send me digital copies of your goals, that would might be much easier to cut and paste.
You should have got it.
Maybe I did, I may have.
Mark, Mark sent it out.
Um, and then, you know, we need to kind of prioritize these or discuss these at a future meeting to.
Yeah, we need to have another, uh, workshop, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, but I would rely on, um, on you to sort of summarize, or you and Barry to summarize and, and
How about?
bring forward the next iteration at a time when Josh can be there, too, and maybe incorporate whatever he contributes.
Yeah, um, I think it's pretty easy to see which ones we didn't really have a lot of conflict on, which we kind of all agree. Uh, it should probably be on there, and then I think there's some that are for debate. Maybe I can sort them in those two columns. You can take a stab at it if you want to, Alison, I'm happy to, to then, um,
Yep.
validate or, you know, challenge, you know, which one we do.
Okay.
All right.
So how can I, can I move that we adjourn?
No, you don't have to move. We can adjourn.
Can we adjourn?
Yeah, we can be adjourned.
Are we adjourned?